Okay, thank you. I am going to bring to order the Wednesday, August 21st meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And we are going to start with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Taylor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Britten Griffith is absent. Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall.
Here.
Paulo Levis.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So items for a public comment and any action item or any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms under this item?
Not on this item.
Is anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I will move on to item four, which is the approval of minutes, several sets of planning commission minutes. Looking for approval, starting with the joint planning commission and Washington County Planning Commission meeting from May 7th, 2019.
So moved to approve.
I have a motion.
And did I hear a second? Sorry.
We're gonna do these individually?
Do you want us to do these all individually? Well, there's some people that have to recuse here, some of them. So I'm doing them in one by one.
So can we do the...
So I've got a motion from Commissioner Hawkins for the first one that I've heard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Commissioner Gower abstained, I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Taylor abstained, I wasn't there.
Okay. Moving on, the regular meeting of May 15th, 2019.
Commissioner Gower moved to approve.
Motion?
Second.
A motion and a second for Commissioner Marshall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Commissioner Taylor, I wasn't there.
You say that a lot, apparently. Okay, for the June 6th meeting.
Commissioner Gower moved to approve the minutes from the June 6th meeting.
Commissioner, give her a second.
Mr. Marshall, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Commissioner Levis abstain.
Commissioner Taylor abstains.
Thank you. Next is the meeting of June 19th.
Moved to approve.
Commissioner Gower, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? I think you had abstained from that one, too.
Yes. Commissioner Taylor.
Okay. There, now we're on to July. Looking for the July 3rd meeting of the Planning Commission.
Moved to approve.
Excellent. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Taylor.
Mr. Hawkins seconded that.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Commissioner Levis abstain.
Mr. Marshall.
Thank you. And then finally, the July 17th meeting.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Hawkins? For a second. Second from Commissioner Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Commissioner Gower abstain.
Commissioner Levis abstain.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. This is the longest set of minute approvals I think we've ever had. Okay, moving on to item number five, city council liaison reports. I do not see our council liaison here, and Arlo is shaking his head that...
No report from council liaison, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item number six, zoning code update. Presentation recommendations for the next version of the zoning code update. Arlo?
Good evening.
Your turn.
Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. How am I controlling this, Michelle?
With the mouse. I think you just do the rollerball.
There we go. So the discussion today is on the issue sheet for administration and procedures. This is the fifth of our monthly series of issue sheet review meetings, and really the last formal one. We have one more meeting set for any outstanding issues to bring back. But here we are, pretty quickly transitioning into the review of draft code language. Before I get into this issue sheet, I wanted to follow up on the discussion last month and provide an overview of our planned public outreach process as we transition into review of actual code drafts. We will be releasing Friday the first draft for public review of module one of the code, dealing with zoning districts and uses. The content of that is consistent with direction we've got at prior meetings on that topic. As a kickoff to that release, we're doing a citywide mailed notification to every property owner in the city, advising them that this project's going on, inviting input, and kicking it off in that manner. Then we will do, there's three more, or three modules total, that will come out in sequence through the end of the year and into January. We'll be receiving input on all of that, including from the Planning Commission and Council, doing a round of revisions, and then a consolidated complete draft of the code is scheduled to be ready in early April, when we plan to do a second draft of public notification that also gets into some of the map amendments. And then finally, adoptions planned about a year from now, in the summer of 2020. In terms of public input opportunities, we're planning to host open houses and public workshops at each of these five phases of the project. The initial open house is really going to be an introduction to the plan and how it's organized and the content of it. Our consultants, Clarion, are flying out from Colorado to be there. Also, since the timing worked out well, we will be doing the same presentation at your September 4th meeting at 5:00, to basically introduce everyone to the plan, outline kind of the organizational changes in the content. And then we'll be following up in late September with public input kind of workshop opportunities on dates that are still being finalized. We'll be doing a round of neighborhood advisory board meetings, both next month and in early 2020. We also have online feedback forums, obviously at these planning commission and city council meetings. And anyone watching on TV, certainly feel free to contact our planning staff, or check out our webpage, reno.gov/zoning. If you want to get up to speed on the project and provide input, we invite that. Whoops. We will be doing some workshops in Spanish as well. And here are the mechanisms people can get information and provide input, a whole range of opportunities, online, in person, and again mailed postcards going out citywide. These won't look like your standard yellow postcards for projects. It'll be a little more graphically interesting and in more standard English language, without all the planning ease that comes across in these planning cases. And lastly, the map amendments. As you recall, there's some pretty significant consolidation of the mixed-use districts anticipated as part of this project. We're planning to do direct mailings as part of that second outreach process to let property owners know what their zoning is now, what zoning is being considered through this update, and inviting input on that. Our hope is to have enough comfort level with the mixed-use areas to do the site-specific rezonings concurrent with the code update, because it's really going to be important for a lot of those people to be able to utilize some of the new code provisions to have that rezoning in place. As we go out into the neighborhoods, the master plan contemplated rezonings of public facilities and also potential removal of some of the neighborhood plan overlay districts that are being effectively covered with the code update. Our plan is to do that, those map changes, in conjunction with our post-adoption neighborhood outreach process to kind of look at additional zoning change opportunities, neighborhood by neighborhood, and kind of avoid a double notification, you know, hey, everyone, we're considering rezoning these public facilities, and then coming back eight months later and essentially doing it again, basically doing that in one swoop. This may involve a phase-in period for the new code. It's typical that agencies will maybe provide a six-month period where applicants can use either code, one or the other in its entirety. We'll work through that as we get towards the end of the process. But really just wanted to kind of go over our outreach plan, now that it's moving from these more conceptual, high-level, general direction topics into the specifics of actual code language. I can tell you, as staff, we're pretty excited, just with the organization of it. It's so much easier to use and understand and navigate, and so much less bulk that you have to flip through and look to find what your rules really are. I guess I'd open it up for any questions on the process before I get into the issue sheet topic here, if there are any.
Issues?
So, great. Look for the postcard in your mailbox. It should land next week. Before I get into this issue sheet, I wanted to do a follow-up on city council actions on the prior issue sheets involving the development standards. There is a little bit of divergence, I'll be honest, in terms of the input I'm getting at the Planning Commission and at the Council. There's somewhat of a split on the Council, but in particular, on your recommendations for additional air quality regulations related to solar and EV-enabled homes, and also non-residential buildings, there was general opposition for including that in the code update. So we got direction, essentially that, one, that's more of an air quality function, and there were concerns about the impacts on the cost of housing. So at this point, the initial draft from the direction we got will not include those additional regulations. There's always opportunities to revisit, but that's the input we got. Similarly, basically the same split with annexation and abandonment reviews. There was a little bit of discomfort with the additional process requirement. So I hope to, you know, work through this process and find consensus in various areas, but I had to report that back to you. In terms of, you may recall, we had a discussion of exceptions to minimum densities and whether to retain our current exceptions or not. The Council direction was to retain those exceptions, essentially as we have them in code. There was a fair bit of input we got that their minimum densities don't seem to be a significant concern at the city council level. They're not really feeling that mandating minimums in these mixed-use areas is a high priority, and a little bit of concern that if we don't have those exceptions, what would otherwise be viewed as positive projects may not be allowed. In terms of the streamlining of special use permits for grading-related activities, you had recommended retaining special use permits, and the Council essentially directed us to reconsider that as part of this issue sheet, which focuses on process more generally. And finally, we did get direction to expedite a code amendment for the park shadowing ordinance to somehow come up with an alternative in our downtown and mixed-use areas to not be an impediment to medium-to-high intensity infill. Just what that looks like, we're not quite sure yet. I thought that would probably be a good topic to come back at your next meeting and discuss. Moving into this issue sheet, there's really four input points that we're asking for feedback on. Process improvements, new tools for design flexibility, project approval findings, and the system of planned unit developments in specific planned districts. I'll speak to each of these and also kind of report on the technical working group suggestions. We had a meeting two days ago where they reviewed all these same topics. Process improvements, there's really a couple important objectives here. At a fundamental level, Reno requires more public hearings, more special use permits, really than any of our peer communities in northern Nevada. Things that require a special use permit here in Reno can go straight to building permit over in Sparks and Carson City, and really in all the other northern Nevada jurisdictions. So that has an impact, both on the cost of development, but also on our budget and our ability to focus time on high priority topics. We are recommending targeted streamlining focused primarily on small projects, and a more streamlined process for smaller projects. The recommendations we're outlining here are still not quite as streamlined as the city of Sparks or Carson City, but significantly more streamlined for smaller projects than is currently in place in Reno. The situation I'm dealing with here as Community Development Director is there's just not enough money to go around. We're in a low-tax environment, and, you know, we're competing against firemen, police officers for the limited amounts of general fund money. Our processing of special use permits costs us money. We don't fully recoup our application fees. That's typical for cities. It was a conscious policy decision because those new projects create jobs and pay taxes and contribute in those ways. But every project we have to process through a public hearing, you know, comes at a cost. And what I've found is our planning staff is essentially buried with special use permits and zone changes and development review projects, and really doesn't have a lot of time for long-range, more strategic planning initiatives, like the regional transportation plan and getting more proactive, like public facility plans for water, wastewater, fire services, things like that. So one of my personal goals as Director of the Department is to find time to focus on those longer-term, forward-thinking priorities, and this is all part of it. It's all part of a system. It's kind of a zero-sum game. We can keep trying for more budget, but it's unrealistic to think we're going to get a massive budget increase. So the more we're doing special use permit review, the less time we have for longer-term strategic planning objectives. I just wanted to kind of emphasize that, because that's a big driver of our recommendations here. At the same time, we're balancing that with the important interest of the community to have review opportunities for projects that could impact them. So we're really trying to balance those things and essentially keep the discretionary review processes in place for bigger projects, identify opportunities for a more streamlined review that still involves public notification, and identify some targeted exceptions to public hearing requirements for less impactful activities. So to that end, there's really a suite of recommendations here outlined in the issue sheet. It's fewer special use permits and expanded use of site plan reviews, including delineating major and minor site plan reviews, where minor site plan reviews would have a simpler application packet, lower fees, and a smaller public notice radius. Both of those site plan review processes would still be publicly noticed. Postcards would go out into mailboxes. They would still be appealable decisions, but it's a much more streamlined process, 30 days to a final decision, if not appealed, for a site plan review compared to between 65 and 95 days for a special use permit. Also relevant to that, I'm not sure if the Commission's aware, but our current process for site plan reviews, the appeals of those go to a hearings officer, which is essentially a lawyer, rather than to the Planning Commission. We feel that these are really design review considerations, and it's not a point of law whether they're approved or not, or what the conditions look like, and that appeals probably should rightfully go to the Planning Commission. We did get some suggestions from the technical working group I'll get into in a bit. An initial kind of threshold for what's a major or minor site plan review would be a five-acre project size or a three-story building height. So under that, the notification radius would go from 750 feet to 250 feet, and it would be a simpler application packet. In addition to that, we're recommending some targeted expansions to the exceptions to public hearing requirements in effect. Some smaller projects, some examples, residential adjacency that are across a major roadway, major arterial or freeway, probably don't warrant in itself a public hearing for residential adjacency, because the road is more impactful than what's across the road from them. Also, with our new, more detailed design standards that are being developed, we think we could allow larger expansions to approved projects, which essentially we're targeting a better utilization of our commercial areas and intensification, that perhaps we could go from a 10% expansion threshold to maybe a 20% expansion threshold for approved projects with appropriate findings. And our consultants also recommended some codes that they've implemented elsewhere for minor PUD amendments. So some small-scale densification could be approved without going through a full PUD amendment process, subject to certain criteria, and we put in the issue sheet kind of a model ordinance that's in place elsewhere. So that's in general, the suite of amendments related to process streamlining is really what it is, streamlining for smaller projects. In terms of the technical working group suggestion, it's generally a industry-focused group, so this isn't necessarily reflective of the neighborhood groups. They were supportive, unsurprisingly, of these streamlinings for smaller projects. They did have a few suggestions to kind of add upon what we outlined, largely based on what's in place in some of our peer communities here. One of them is just consider renaming. Special use permit isn't really a good name. It's not that they're so special. It's many communities use conditional use permits, CUP. Not that it's that different, but it kind of changes expectations. They also really emphasize that we need to differentiate use permits, special use permits or conditional use permits should be for land uses, land use approvals, and site plan review or some other design review process should be more applicable for design things. For instance, we require a special use permit for increased height in certain districts. That's really not a use issue, it's a design issue. So there were some suggestions to more clearly differentiate between the two. Not that there isn't overlap, but many communities kind of do draw a procedural distinction between use issues and design issues, and also have different findings that are more applicable to those topics. They suggested that, like Sparks, that we consider some using administrative, non-appealable, no-public-notice use permits for small projects. That's currently in place, really in Sparks, Carson City, all the other local jurisdictions here. Angela, who I'm very happy has joined our staff, has been working with all these agencies, and if you have questions on it, could articulate in much more detail than I what these systems are in our peer communities, and, you know, her perspective on how they're working, which is generally well. You know, we have a bit of a reputation of having a difficult process, a difficult code which we're fixing, but also a very cumbersome development review process, and that does have impacts. A lot of people don't want to invest in those types of places. So if we can do targeted improvements to our process requirements without compromising the interest of the public and reviewing what's coming in around them, we think that's a very good thing. Also, suggestions, in terms of site plan review appeals, the group suggested we consider those appeals going straight to Council. So that would continue to the current situation of the Planning Commission not seeing those appeals, but it would be a more streamlined process. These are all somewhat different than what we outlined, although kind of along the general, same general emphasis, I guess. Second topic, tools for design alternatives. Again, these recommendations are modeled after codes that are already in place in many jurisdictions, including Sparks and Carson City. One of the challenges we have involves variances, and the findings required for variances of having a unique property situation or hardship or those types of things. You really have to have a special situation to be eligible for a variance. And that kind of rules out the type of situation where a regular old property may have a good reason for some deviation to standards. So the recommendations are to maximize the use of minor deviations, which we currently allow for up to 10% of numeric requirements. So a 10-foot setback can administratively be relaxed to a nine-foot setback. That does require consent of the abutting, written consent of the abutting property owners. The city of Sparks has a process that's been in place for quite some time, and everyone seems, everyone I've talked to seems to think it's working quite well, called major deviations. Those allow deviations up to 50%, so a 10-foot setback could be reduced to five-foot setback. It requires a finding essentially of no significant impact, but it does not require a finding of having a unique or exceptional situation like a variance does. So sometimes these are used where security concerns warrant a taller fence around a property, and those types of situations, that do come up all the time, and really, as an administrator, I don't have any tools. I kind of have to tell people, gosh, I'm sorry, that makes sense, but a variance is going to be really hard due to the findings. We don't really have a process to consider those. The recommendation for major deviations is that those are publicly noticed and appealable, essentially similar to the site plan review process. So if neighbors had concerns, they would have recourse to appeal it up ultimately to the city council. The third tool for design flexibility, also in place in many communities nationwide, is a alternative compliance tool, where people could propose a deviation to a design-based standard, maybe it's an architectural guideline, and essentially demonstrate and document that what they're proposing is as good or better than what the code would require. That would also require public notification and be appealable. There were suggestions in the prior code assessment report that we consider a design review committee, and at staff level, we did, and we recommend not establishing one at this point, and seeing how the new code works for a period of time, probably 12 months or so. And if it proves that there's too much workload at the Planning Commission, or the system isn't working well, maybe consider establishment of a DRC at that point. Our major factor in not suggesting a design review committee now is the financial implications of doing so. It's a whole new board, it's going to cost money, it's a whole new process and new people that need to be appointed, and quite frankly, you all have the technical expertise to do what a design review committee would do. So we're recommending that we give this a try. Our recommendations involving fewer special use permits and more site plan review should modestly reduce your caseload here at the Planning Commission and free up a little time to consider things like major deviations and alternative compliance proposals. The technical working group loved this and didn't really have any suggested changes. Findings, I can be pretty brief about, they're difficult. They're not, our findings that we currently have in place often don't relate to the application. The classic example is our finding related to window placement is completely unrelated to most triggers for a special use permit. We're essentially recommending a wholesale revisiting of our findings with help from the consultants to kind of craft findings that are really focused on the discretionary action and impacts to the community and things like that. And things like window placement should be in design standards, not a finding. And also targeting our findings more appropriately to the requests being made, special use permits for grading should not have findings involving building design. There's no building design in that application. We are recommending, with significant consultation with our consultants, that we kind of keep our system of having standard findings for each type of request. Some communities develop project-specific findings, where a finding would be different for each different project. That can work, but it also gets cumbersome and inconsistent, and our consultants pretty strongly recommended that we keep the basic framework we have, but we just change what those findings are. Technical working group, this was a big issue for the industry of inapplicable findings, so they like these changes. PUDs and SPDs. The code assessment report you may recommend suggested a pretty extensive list, it's in the issue sheet here, of requirements prior to establishment of a PUD, generally intended to minimize the use of PUDs. There's pros and cons associated with that. Certainly, getting consistent PUDs and making sure there's a clear public benefit is a good thing. At the same time, some of our best projects in the community have been developed under PUDs, and if we get too stringent discouraging them, we may not get some of the public benefits that are often provided as part of the PUD trade-off arrangement. Things like developer-maintenance of public parks and trails often come along with PUD approvals, and those arrangements become much more difficult under standards zoning. It also allows for a customized suite of uses, where more impactful uses that could be tied to, say, a community commercial zone could be restricted, and a more targeted list of uses and development types could be laid out. At the same time, they can be very difficult to administer. So our recommendation to you, it's really a policy matter, do you want to affirm essentially what's in the code assessment report and develop these suite of things to... So our recommendation to you, it's really a policy matter. Do you want to affirm essentially what's in the code assessment report and develop these suite of things to discourage PUDs? Alternatively, we could focus requirements on not discouraging PUDs, but focus more on ensuring the quality of PUDs and the public benefit and consistent formatting. Just really wanted to float that out for discussion and input before we stuck it in a code document. Related but different is the topic of specific plan districts. There's been some concerns about the legality of using SPDs because they are not clearly articulated in state law as a zoning district or zoning tool. At the same time, they're very popular both for developers and neighborhood groups, and they're really a good tool to strike compromises on specific sites and kind of limit the range of development that could be allowed, allow a project to proceed without allowing the full suite of uses or heights or the various standards that come along with standard zoning districts. So the recommendation to the state has been to delete them. And the master plan was based on that, and it would no longer be a tool. That's what we've been administering based on the master plan. However, we became aware of some legislation that doesn't, I'm getting a little techie here, but essentially it establishes more of a home rule arrangement in Nevada as opposed to a Dillon's rule. The difference is in Nevada traditionally, if a, I'm not going to phrase this right, but basically if a right is not established in state law, is something local governments can do, you can't do it. And under home rule, if it's not prohibited by state law, you can do it. So this is not quite all the way to home rule. The NRS section is outlined up there. But it does appear to provide an opening where maybe some of the legal concerns about SPD may not be as significant or may not exist at all. And we may have an opportunity to retain that zoning district tool. That is something that planning staff would support if legally permissible. It's going to take more research to look into it, but we're a little concerned about losing that tool for compromise, especially if we make it more difficult to do a PUD. And PUDs also have acreage requirements. We really wouldn't have a tool for smaller sites to establish supplemental limitations that would stay with the land as part of the zoning like an SPD does. I think you'll be hearing a case later today that's an existing SPD looking to rezone to a standard district. Those are the type of situations we have. I think, yeah, the technical working group, they love SPDs. It's really a tool to resolve conflicts and allow projects to proceed without as much neighborhood concern. And there was some mixed views on PUDs, you know, as I said, pros and cons, and I think that was reflected in our discussion. Whichever decision is made on these topics, we are recommending that we develop standardized format and content requirements for both of these districts to improve administration and consistency and make sure rules aren't missed. Basically, all of them would be organized the same way, and there would be a list of what they can and can't change in terms of citywide zoning. That's all for me. Myself, Angela, Nathan, all here for questions. Open it up to the group.
Thanks, Arlo. I will open it up for questions, but I do have at least one request to speak for him from the public on this. I'd like to start with that before we bring in for questions. So my question to speak for him from Donna Keats.
Hi, I'm Donna Keats, resident of Reno. Thanks for getting me out of the way first. This is all a little bit out of my bailiwick here, but I want to, I tried to pay Arlo a compliment last month, and I'm not sure he got it.
I got it.
You did get it? Okay, because the way I think this is going is being very well done, and it seems to me it's changed a lot since the beginning, and I really appreciate how these topics are being parsed out and presented. I really appreciate your discussion tonight about the public input process, following up on that from last month. Some of these things, again, are beyond me. I realize that Arlo's got a very difficult job of trying to get staff time freed up within certain budgets and managing all of that. And I think he's watching out for the interest of established neighborhoods as well as developers. I'll express again my fundamental objection to all the technical working groups being comprised of people who want to get their projects done faster, because I think cities run into trouble when they go that way. So I just do. And I want to also say that I think that the planning commission's input on all the SUP and all the hearings that come to you, you guys, I've seen you make some really great comments and suggested changes to projects, and I appreciate the opportunity that the planning commission has because you all represent constituents in different districts. You all have different backgrounds, and I think it's really important that some projects continue to come here. I know Commissioner Marshall's not a huge fan of hearing every project that comes forward in the city, but I think you guys have done some really good things and really helped because you've had the opportunity to participate in these things instead of just wiping them off to, here's the planner of the day who may or may not have whatever experience or personal view on certain things in the interpretive process. So I hope that you'll consider that and some detail about what you do actually bring to the projects and the development of this city that could be lost if rules are relaxed a little too much. Or, anyway, I think you've done really great things, and I would like to see you continue to participate more than less. I also don't like the 50% variance thing. I think that's way too high to just go 50% off the table. That's silly. But major and minor permit reviews, I do that in my business, mining permitting, which is what I do. We got major reviews, minor reviews. We go that route all the time so we can redo a groundwater plan without having to have it public-noticed and stuff. And a lot of times, it actually is of great benefit to the water quality and the community that I'm working for, stuff like that. So I'm not, I don't object to that, but I hope that you consider carefully how you back yourself out of the process because of money. Make a lot of decisions right now because it costs the city money, and also that, those decisions also have big ramifications in the future. So I don't know, you know, that could be the wrong answer to the right question, in a way, you know, to about how to free up staff time because we can't afford it, although I appreciate what the community development department is trying to do. It might be the answer to the wrong question, or, you know what I mean. Anyway, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Michelle, do we have any additional requests to speak for on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment under this item? Hey, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. We do have several items that were presented. I believe there's four of them here, Arlo. I think just in the interest of all of the stuff that's been presented to us, I'd prefer to maybe work our way through them one at a time based on the way they were presented. So I guess we've got feedback topic number one, which is the various development review process improvements. Like to see if commissioners have any comments or questions as far as what's been put up with these options as a starting point. Commissioner Gower? Or Commissioner Marshall? You're looking at each other.
I'm not on my service. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for topic one, just kind of start with the general. I kind of share Donna's thoughts that I think there are a lot of values that the planning commission brings to the process, the, you know, the public component, obviously, of being able to be involved in the process and provide comment and, you know, have an input on the outcome. So I think that's a really important piece of the puzzle. And I know, Arlo, that you, through this process and staff, has that in mind. So I appreciate that. And, you know, I think that we're, in my opinion, really close in striking this balance between, you know, streamlining the process to the point where, you know, we are reducing those costs to the city, reducing the burden for certain proposals that don't really need to come to us. And I think some of the ones that you've outlined here are definitely a good start. So that's kind of the big picture of it. You know, I do think that maybe the pendulum in certain instances has swung a little bit too far in reducing that public participation opportunity. For example, like with these minor site plan reviews, the noticing requirement going down from essentially 750 feet to 250 feet, you know, that's not, that's not a very big radius, for example. So I think that, you know, taking a look at that, potentially pushing that back out to 500 feet, so you're capturing a little bit smaller area, but still involving, you know, a good cross-section of neighbors of a proposal. I think those were my comments for feedback topic one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Commissioner Marshall?
I'm a little uncertain as to where to put these, my comments of, I think this is...
When have we ever stayed on topic before? So...
When have I ever stayed on? I'm just trying to find ways to, you know, speed up processing of projects I like and slow down ones I don't. So if you could help me with that, I...
Working on it.
Is this major deviation versus variance? Is that on this?
That'll be our next one.
That next, okay. It is, I think, very important when we are trying to advance, you know, kind of a redirection of the region, excuse me, master plan, to really maintain and nurture public support. And that happens when we engage the public. And it has the potential to, I don't know, maybe step too quickly if the public is not engaged. And oftentimes, the point of that engagement is special use permits or other types of hearing on particular projects where the justification for the project at hand can be articulated, and hopefully there can be some greater understanding. Now, that's balanced with the need to get, you know, development projects, particularly ones that we, that really promote the values of the regional, excuse me, master plan, done and done expeditiously and cost-effectively. So I'm sure these are all major concerns that you're aware of, but I think, you know, particularly looking at some of the, I'm sorry to deviate here, but California legislation on housing issues and the degree to which statewide control is directing, you know, really expedited approvals and really limiting the amount of public input and, quite honestly, to get rid of NIMBY opposition. I think there's a right balance, and I'm trying to get at the same thing as maybe Commissioner Gower was, of really thinking through those things. And so if there are changes, particularly for SUPs to different kinds of processes, that we think through the potential consequences of driving those down to simpler processes, which I'm generally in support of, but the same trying to figure out how to promote understanding and acceptance of our master plan goals like densifying and providing a full range of housing types and those kind of important goals that I think we can, I don't know exactly how to deal with that. I'm glad I'm not in your shoes, and you get to try to figure out the right porch for those things. Findings is another topic.
Another, I would like, just if I could, a quick response to that last one. I fully agree. The public engagement and involvement is critically important. My belief is that that is much more effective if you engage at a planning level, not at a more adversarial project-by-project level, which is essentially what a special use permit in a venue like this is. Everyone gets their three minutes. That's a big reason why we recommended and you endorsed doing these post-update neighborhood engagement efforts, where we're going to be going out to every neighborhood in the community and doing that type of engagement at the zoning map level and the public improvement level and having more time to really talk about, hey, what's the zoning there before all of a sudden a project comes in with zoning that the neighborhood may not feel is appropriate, but the zoning allows the use. So that's the balance we're striking, and that's also why our recommendations for site plan review do not go as far as what's currently in place in Sparks and Carson City. Their site plan reviews are not publicly noticed, and they're not appealable, and there is no public engagement. It's staff writing conditions of approval on a project. We didn't recommend getting that aggressive for the reasons you mentioned. So I just wanted to share that as part of the discussion.
Thank you, Arlo. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Arlo. I am fully in support of a streamlined process. We talk about a balance. I'm not in favor of sacrificing transparency. And from what you've presented from the TWG, it doesn't look like there is a sacrifice of transparency. I do have a question. What you proposed, does it loosen the restrictions on the developers or the builders?
No. No, it doesn't, because we're planning to adopt more stringent development regulations, and it's more of a shift to a consistent regulation-based approach with less kind of discretionary case-by-case review. So in theory, our standards will have things like noise impacts and air quality and all those issues, hours of operation covered as a matter of code. And you should be seeing projects with much fewer conditions of approval because those matters should be addressed in a more comprehensive code. So in that respect, it's not making it easier on development. Where it is making it easier on development is some targeted process streamlining, because time is money. And, you know, that's one area where if we can be more expeditious or a site plan review, if it's non-controversial, everyone gets noticed and there's no appeal, boom, 30 days you're done. It's a quicker staff process. It's a cheaper application, and it's quicker to get your project online. That's a benefit to the development community and also to our budget. So it's a little bit of give and take, I guess.
A balance. So we can streamline the approach without sacrificing quality.
That's what we're working towards here. In fact, improving quality and at the same time, streamlining is really our goal.
And then my second comment is just a comment. I don't think that you engage the public by sending out more mailers. I think you engage the public by what you are proposing to do with your neighborhood meetings, and I think you will get better results from that. So increasing a radius from 250 to 750 isn't necessarily going to increase the quality of your results, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Additional comments, commissioners? Mr. Gower?
Mr. Chairman, just one more specific thing that I forgot to mention. I knew there was one more on this issue. I would caution planning staff to look at the residential adjacency, getting rid of that because there's a arterial roadway there. I've seen instances around town where using that as an excuse to say that there are no impacts on adjacent residential is not necessarily sufficient. So I would not be in favor of just a carte blanche removal of that discretionary review. And I disagree with Commissioner Taylor's last comment.
Okay. Just to clarify, many larger projects would still trigger that discretionary review because of the nature of the project. It would just be the adjacency itself would not trigger that review if it didn't meet one of our other special use permit triggers generally involving a larger project size or a more impactful use type. And that rationale is because a major arterial is typically more impactful than a small commercial use across that major arterial. Just...
Thank you, Commissioner. Arlo, just a couple of comments of mine on this. I think I agree in concept with what we're going here. Problem I have, and problem I've had, I think, with this entire sort of overview is that a lot of this sounds great in concept, but I'm not seeing examples of how this is, where would this have saved us? And I think that's, everything that we're looking at here, almost without exception, I think there's been a couple of them with the, you know, I like the major and the minor. I like some of the exceptions. I really like something with respect to the minor PUD amendments. I think that one has balled us up a number of times for things that seem to still be in keeping with the PUD. But some of this, these recommendations about going back to a...
But some of this, these recommendations about going back to a away from a SUP to an SPR and understanding exactly, you know, maybe a physical or a past example of that. I think the devil's really in the details. And I think as we're moving forward with this and we're seeing, obviously, we're going to be looking at a code that has a number of different requirements in it already that may not be there now. But it's, while I support what we're proposing to do here, I share the concerns of the Commissioners that I think we need to be paying attention to those items that fall through the cracks. I mean, a three-story limit on a minor site plan review and a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius to that, depending on where that three-story building may land on that five-acre parcel, could have an impact greater than two-hundred-and-fifty feet away. So there's a number of concerns here. So while I support this, I'm apprehensive until I'm actually seeing some of the other code-related items that we've spoken about with specifics, mainly for the second phase with the development standards and knowing whether or not having those in place is going to allow for some of this to go away and not sacrifice the quality that we've been going to. So again, I don't have anything here that jumps out at me as being problematic, but I do have some concerns about some specific implementations of this as we go down the road.
Sure. We're going to quickly transition into that phase of the process.
I am excited about that as well. Okay. Any additional comments on topic number one? Feedback topic number two, I believe, is the design alternatives. So this is the deviations section. Commissioners, comments, concerns or questions on this? Commissioner Marshall?
Yeah, I'm just in support of the major deviations versus the variance. I think just from our experience with variances, I find them to be inconsistently applied. And so if there's a way to address those, you know, they really are design issues. So I applaud that and am supportive of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional comments?
Arlo, I'll throw out there that the major deviations portion, up to fifty percent, as long as we're looking at that still under the public hearing and with some of the language, I think Commissioner Marshall is right. There's a very challenging approach to the term deviation in our current code. So giving us some options for that, I think, is good. But I share even the public comment that we had tonight. Fifty percent is a big jump. So that would need to be retained with a public hearing there. The other question, and this is maybe a question between the items here, both with alternative compliance and the Design Review Committee, some of the design-based codes, some of the ones that we've spoken about previously, presenting an alternative compliance to that, to whom? Is that presentation looked at at community development as part of the submission? Or is that something that ultimately, since it doesn't have, you're not recommending a Design Review Committee, who is making the ultimate determination on an alternative compliance to a design-based code requirement?
Our recommendation is that that be treated like site plan review, where it would be an administrative decision with public notice that is appealable up to the planning commission. So if it's not appealed, it would be thirty-day approval. If none of the neighbors or nearby property owners object, it's done. If anyone objects to it, then it would be appealed to this body.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be curious to hear your take on the Design Review Committee versus Planning Commission concept, since you're the, sort of the resident architect on the commission. You know, and I'm thinking that if, you know, in six years, when you're not on the commission anymore and there isn't a...
Six?
Maybe five and a half.
Okay.
When there's not an architect, potentially, if you're not replaced by an architect or anyone else, do we lose that design background that you reference in your issue sheet? And then what happens?
It's an excellent question. I mean, I think, obviously, the intent of the makeup of this board is, you know, it's a recommendation, but it serves at the, you know, based on the recommendation of council and what they deem as significant for that. And I think you're right. We have a broad range and a good mix right now. The discussions that I've had about the Design Review Committee have recognized the issues with the cost and the administration of it. And I don't have an answer to that. I believe it's something that has value, but I believe it's something that needs to be a voluntary decision made by the applicant rather than something that is administered, sort of as an alternative, almost that alternative compliance path that we're talking about. And that was why I was linking the two together and asking who would be responsible for something like that. So it seems to me like there is a cost associated with it, but I see that as almost a standing committee that meets only when it's requested by an applicant and not something that is a regularly scheduled meeting. So to me, I think there is a path forward to create something like that to maintain, whether it's city-based, because the city has professionals in a number of these areas that could respond to that. But in keeping with the idea of public notification and public discussion, it seems like it's something that could be looked at maybe as a minimal cost that maybe not borne by the developer or the applicant that's requesting it, but as one of those alternative paths that we're looking at, whether it's alternative compliance or some method that maybe keeps us away from some of the other options. So I understand not going there right now. I think there's a lot of change that's happening with the code update that may address a number of these issues even before we get to that point. And the discussions I've had have been, let's get the code out there, start looking at it, see where it's at, and then take it for that twelve-month test drive and see what we're running into. So I understand the reasons for it. I would certainly love to have that happen, provided I'm not on it.
That could be your next move.
So yeah, in eight, twelve, however many years you want to throw me on here. Yeah. So I appreciate the question and I think that's the direction that I'm seeing with not having that as something that's implemented right now just because there's a lot of other things in place that may minimize the need for it, hopefully.
And Arlo, I'm sure you've looked at that too. And I guess my concern with the alternative path is the potential for confusion on the part of the public. I think it's already confusing enough for a member of the public who's not typically engaged with, you know, any sort of the planning process. They get a postcard in the mail and they come to a planning commission meeting. And I think, you know, sometimes they think that they're at a city council meeting or, you know, I understand that. It can be confusing if you don't deal with this on a regular basis. So, you know, having a planning commission and then, oh, now this project went to, you know, Design Review Committee, or, you know, this one's part of a discretionary review. Just making sure on that transparency side that, you know, if we do have a standing committee or we decide to go one way or another, that, you know, it's easy for the public to be able to navigate that process.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Hey, feedback topic number three. Clarify project approval findings. Any comments on this one?
Commissioner Gower, a hundred percent agree.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Commissioner Gower, and I finally agree on something. Hundred percent agree.
Commissioner Marshall?
Commissioner Marshall, I'm sorry not to be able to join the crowd. I'm a little concerned about the findings element. And really, it was more of what you talked about than what I read in the report. And while I agree there can be findings that are irrelevant to the project, I think what I'm hearing is, and I may request that we get some strong legal opinion to say that if we're reducing the findings purely to be related to the reason why the project triggered a SUP or CUP, depending on where we go, then that, I think, is a critical issue for us to discuss and come to a common understanding of, you know, how really narrow those findings should be or legally can be.
Yeah, certainly, we don't want to, you know, get rid of important findings in terms of compatibility, consistency with master plan, adequacy of public facilities, you know, mitigating impacts on nearby properties, those types of things. There really are kind of best practices for findings nationally and ours aren't quite aligned with that. We've had the same findings for many decades. And we keep bringing up the window placement one, but, you know, the code consultants who do hundreds of codes around the country, they just laugh at this. Like, this isn't a finding, this is a development standard. You know, those types of things. So it's really just refining them. It certainly isn't in any way to push the legal requirements, but really just to calibrate them better to the types of requests being proposed. So you wouldn't have as many, you know, this finding isn't applicable or some analysis that's kind of tangentially related to how, you know, building placement relates to grading or those types of things. So sorry if I didn't properly present what our intent was, but it's really just to take a fresh look at them and kind of bring them in line with national best practices for project approval findings.
Commissioners, additional comments? Feedback topic number four. Plan unit development in specific plan districts. Commissioners, any comments on this recommendation? Commissioner Marshall?
I think this issue was addressed fairly well within the master plan, particularly for SPDs. And I'm thinking I'm talking about something that's different, but didn't the master plan direct? Is there something different that's a special planning area?
Yeah, that's the master plan designation.
I'm sorry, got it, forget it.
Different topic.
Different topic.
There were, to date, recommendations to delete SPD, largely because of legal concerns prior to this law and also the ease of administration. We're kind of reevaluating that approach, given the potential impacts of that change.
The only thing I've noticed, and I think we've noticed when we've talked about certain larger city-wide zoning and planning efforts, is that once you lock in something in a PUD, of course, there's maybe greater flexibility on the front end, but that, and in turn, locks into inflexibility on the back end and the ability to promote planning policies that may be inconsistent with something that was created twenty-five years ago. And so I think, for me, that's one reason that we should maintain discouraging, you know, vehicles that have that effect.
There's an important point on that topic. PUDs are an agreement that can't be amended without consent of the property owner that's subject to it. SPD is zoning that the city could, over the objection of a property owner amend. But kind of by its nature, it is designed to lock things in and be a little bit inflexible over time to provide greater certainty for the surrounding people.
Additional comments on this, Commissioner Gower?
Arlo, I think you had sort of a spectrum of recommendations or possibilities in your presentation, and I liked the way that you phrased one of them, essentially saying not to completely eliminate or completely discourage the use of these functions, but maybe be a little bit more prudent in the way that they're applied, taking a little bit harder look. So I won't try to rephrase the way you said it, but I think you know which recommendation I'm talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner. I guess this one I find interesting. I think your comment from the technical working group was sort of my thinking as well. It's, on one hand, I like clarifying it and minimizing the use of it, but on the other hand, there's a lot of good that can come from one of these. So I think the, at the bare minimum, the recommendation, as you've indicated, about, you know, updating standards and formats to how these things are put together to have them consistent is important. And I do think there's some things in the assessment recommendation that are, some of them seem to be certainly necessary, like requiring the master plan land uses in the PUD matching the city's master plan land uses. But there are others in here that may be more problematic with respect to what the PUDs are attempting to accomplish. You know, the comment about requiring a greater mix of housing types as a planned unit development requirement. I can see that becoming, I think, one of those items that you were saying that could discourage PUDs. So I don't have an answer for this. I think we certainly need to continue looking at them and maybe have a little bit better control of what they are. Whether that means discouraging them, I don't know that I'm necessarily going that far. I think we just need to kind of clean up the process and simplify with respect to almost the administration at the city level with that. So, these are my thoughts. Any additional comments on topic four? With that, I guess, Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, before we wrap up the item, Arlo, for our next meeting, I would, and I welcome the Commission's feedback on this, but I'd like the Commission to have another opportunity to discuss some of the air quality. It's not really the air quality. It's, you know, opportunities to implement some of the, you know, the topics that were discussed in the master planning process, in the recently adopted Sustainability and Climate Action Plan and in the City Reno's resolution to accept the Washoe County Air Quality Management Division's ozone advance program. So I think we're all, you know, as a commission, interested in seeking those opportunities and providing recommendations to city council. So maybe we can have another crack at that at our next meeting?
Happy to do that.
Okay, thanks.
We were also anticipating bringing, you may recall, there's a whole suite of amendments that are not packaged with this code update. We were anticipating bringing that forward and getting some general input into which of those topics are higher priorities than others, probably to follow up later with the annual strategic planning process, but so we can kind of get an idea on, you know, there's fifteen things on that list and we can't do all of them, but maybe start some prep work for some of the high priority ones. So that was also anticipated to be up next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so as I've asked before, Arlo, do you need a specific motion to carry this forward? Or is the feedback that we've provided up to this point acceptable to you?
The feedback was very helpful. I don't think we need specific motions at this point. We can report this up to the city council and craft code accordingly.
Commissioners, just one more chance. Any other comments on what's been presented this evening? Thank you, Arlo. We look forward to seeing you again next month or in two minutes when you return to your chair.
And just a reminder, we are, for that Clarion presentation, going to start at five at your next meeting as well. So your next, both of meetings next month will begin at five o'clock on zoning-related issues. Hope you're able to make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlo. Okay. With that, I am going to go ahead and move on to our public hearings portion, starting with item seven point one, which is case number LDC one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-six-five, Ranchera Village Four. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant for the Ranchera Village Four tentative map. Before you tonight, we have a tentative map to establish thirty-seven duet units for a total of seven... we have a tentative map to establish 37 duet units for a total of 74 residential units on 7.8 acres of land within the Ranchera Planned Unit Development. We also have a special use permit as allowed within the PUD to allow for building heights to be modified up to three stories for this village. Village 4, on the south side of your screen here, the south side of the ranch, is designated as cottages. In the context of Ranchera PUD, there's kind of three residential densities, a single-family density is the lowest, single-family detached, kind of traditional, single-family zoning. The cottages is kind of a mix of that, some small lots, some attached products, and then the urban residential, which is Village 7 at the north, and is our highest density, primarily attached product. So this is a higher-density, single-family attached project that is being proposed at this time. Just to give you some context, to kind of go over a little bit briefly of the projects you've seen to date, we're working our way through the build-out of Ranchera, so Villages 1, 2, and 3, which I'm circling here, were the first to come in. Village 1, 2 at the top here is currently being built out by Toll Brothers. Village 2 and Village 5 were both mapped as custom home lots. All of those lots have sold, and about a dozen homes are under construction right now. There is also another nine lots on the very south side of the ranch. Those nine lots are also custom lots, and the final map is set to be recording here in the next few weeks. You also saw Village 6A. Village 6A is detached patio homes. That also has been sold to Toll Brothers and is under construction right now. So this Village 4 down at the bottom here is the first of the attached product, the single-family attached, and gets to more of the densification that we will start to see in, in Village 4, 6B, and 7, as we move forward. Additionally, the commercial on the north and south are under construction right now. There is a concrete care facility, a memory care, and assisted care, as well as the Schwab Bank, and then the village, which is kind of the commercial restaurant area, is under construction as well. The mansion, the former mansion, is also under construction as the club at Ranchera, a social club, kind of a country club without the golf course. Just to give you a little bit of con, more context, in, in the PUD, there are a number of open space corridors that are established adjacent to Village 4. The Evans Creek Corridor comes through on the south side here. There is a major trail corridor that comes on the north side. That trail corridor is already constructed. And then on the south side of the event center here, which is next to some of the cottages that we're proposing are, is a 45-foot wide, basically, we call it, we refer to it a lot often as the Del Monte Buffer, which maintains the, the dense evergreen and berm, evergreen plantings and berm that currently exists along Del Monte. Some of the project specifics, the 7.8 acre site is in two parts. The first part is about 6.3 acres, located between the mansion or the club and the equestrian facility. The other 1.5 acres is actually on the club grounds, it's on the, the major lawn and next to the pond out here. This project consists of 27 three-story duets, so these are, these footprints here, the kind of smaller square footprints. Those three-story duets are, are stacked duet product, so effectively, there, there are three stories. On the ground floor is the garage. The second level would be the first unit, and then the third level would be the second unit. So the units are actually, you know, basically, single-level flats that are stacked on top of each other. Those in particular, that product has small elevators in there, so it's a very convenient living style for those units. The other 10 duets are all two-story units, and they're more your traditional duet that you've seen, or more of like a duplex, where they have a shared wall next door to each other, and they're, they live in two stories. Everything is alley-loaded here with no on-street parking. We have sidewalk connectivity through this and down, connecting into the club facility here, so this is very much a, kind of a live-play atmosphere that we're trying to create. Also have sidewalk connectivity to the trail corridor, which is on the north side, which also provides access past the club and down to the village, which is the major commercial element of Ranchera. And then we have parking bays located throughout, which provide for the guest parking here. The project architecture, just to kind of remind, refresh the memory, this is out of the PUD, kind of, basically, the way we address architecture in the PUD is through character photography, and so the elements are not supposed to match exactly, but they're kind of supposed to be akin to some of the surrounding architecture, as well as more agrarian and ranch-style architecture. So looking at the three-story duets, it definitely plays off of the white with the green roof that is prominent around the ranch, also brings in some more modern, modern farmhouse and modern agrarian-type architecture. Definitely a lot of outdoor spaces, outdoor patios and decks that are incorporated into the architecture as well that I'm pointing out here. The two-story product, again, similar and complimentary to the three-story, the use of the, the vertical siding, the green roofs, generally white pallets or, or muted pallets in this case. Because the special use permit for the three-story element, we did do a, we looked at it a couple of different ways. There are increased setbacks along the south side. This is the old Bancroft House, it's one of the estate residential parcels that was maintained, one of the older houses that was maintained on the ranch. There is some drainage infrastructure that has to be built, and an increased setback to the proposed units, so we were able to get that distance separation to make up for the height that these have. Additionally, there was some concerns, you know, when we went through the PUD amendment that established the three-story for this, that there would be views into it from Del Monte, so Del Monte is on the south side of the ranch. So we did a photo simulations and, and kind of a viewshed analysis to provide the commission with justification that, basically, from the south side of the ranch, it's, it's really not visible, especially when you have some of the existing, or the proposed custom homes built on the equestrian nine lots on the south side. So just to flip through a couple of these, it's not all of them, I believe all of them are in your packet. Generally speaking, the mass of these three-story units are comparable to the equestrian center, as well as the mansion, they're very large structures, and so the heights are complementary to those. Looking from the north, there was concern from staff that we would have, because of the size of the existing equestrian center, that there would be a canyon effect, that basically you would have, you know, very tall structures on a, on a narrow road, and creating a canyon as you go down. As you see, there's quite a bit of setback to the equestrian center here, so you do not have that, that canyon effect, and you do still have, you know, similar massing here. Looking at the site from Del Monte from the south, which is in the unincorporated county area, this is along, kind of along the curve, right next to Lot 1 of the equestrian nine custom lots, this is existing. And then with the home that gets built in there, as well as, there's a condition to be a 30-foot wide landscape buffer along Del Monte, so you're going to have some more mature landscaping over time. You get sort of screened views of the tops of those buildings, so you're not getting the broadside of a, of a three-story building there. View G, which this is not a part of the ranch, this is a Rossers House, so view from there, mature landscaping really screens out the, the model, the 3D model is in there, you just can't see it behind the trees. So we pointed out where approximately those, those homes are. Similarly, from Kitsky Lane, you see, all of this will be screened ultimately by the village commercial development, but just to give you a sense of, you know, the large mansion now, and you see just the, you know, the kind of complimentary architecture behind it. Nothing's of a larger scale, it's all of similar scale and blends in. With that, we are in agreement with staff's recommendation and the conditions that presented to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. We'll get a presentation from staff and call you back. Brooke, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair Johnson, Brooke Oswald, associate planner for the record. Staff did receive one phone call in regards to this project. It was a neutral phone call. They were interested in the project location and if the home that was pointed out by Andy would be impacted by this development as far as a demolition or that. I explained that it would not, and the location, they did not seem to have any concerns past that. In the NAB, there were comments related to concerns about that height massing of that third story behind there as a, per that NAB meeting, and working with the applicant's representative, they did provide those visualizations along Del Monte that show that is a minimal impact, is when we're seeing that other development going in, that we're seeing that minimal impact. The landscape currently meets RMC code, as, as does the rest, but we did do an additional condition that you will see there along that side, the canyon, where Fabel Way will come down through here. We are requiring approximately six additional trees along that way to provide some extra landscape buffering along those home fronts as that, as that goes through there. We've also, in that area, requested that the sidewalk be moved to the western portion of that. We will have sidewalk on one side, and that is due to the concerns we had about driveways being that short out onto a driveway, and not as safety concerns of visualization of them coming out on the sideways, and how tight those driveways were together. The landscape that is provided and proposed is consistent. There's an overall arborist plan for the project site that was submitted with the PUD. It is consistent with that arborist plan of what they're proposing. As far as parking, parking, they are required to have 156 stalls per Reno Municipal Code. They are providing 216, as was demonstrated in, from Andy. We, we do have two parked for each dwelling unit, and then we have an additional 65 stalls that will be extra for visitors, guests, additional parking. Within those two, we also have, as was mentioned in the staff report, several of these have an additional garage unit that will be anticipated to hold a golf cart or some other sort of electric form of transportation, encouraging, once again, encouraging that alternative transportation and that walkability through the community. With the information provided and the conditions as written, staff can make all applicable findings and does recommend approval of the project. Planning and engineering staff are available if questions, if the commission has questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Before I open this up for public comment, I'll bring it back to the commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Levis.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, I am familiar with the site and met with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, visited the site, met with applicant's representative.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
Not on this item.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seen none. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Would like to get us started. Commissioner Hawkins?
The only thing I have is during my meeting with Andy, with Wood Rogers, my biggest concern was shadowing for the height of the buildings, but I think he pretty well satisfied that in our chat.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Comments? More motion? Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
Not seeing any.
Okay. Case of LDC 19-00065, Ranchera Village 4, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and special use permit subject to conditions, and I can meet all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Hawkins, second. I can make the findings.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda, case, item number 7.2, case number LDC 19-00064, Sierra Palette Pavement and Condition Amendment. We will start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Carrie Rohrmeyer, for the record. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Sierra Palette. We are representing, or I'm representing the Sierra Palette business, which is at 400 Western Road in the North Valleys. This is an existing business. There are no changes proposed to the total size of the site or the total size of the building. You can see the vicinity here is a mix of industrial park, City of Reno Park, and then some residential. This is what the building looks like today, and this is specifically why we're here, is to request an increase in this fence height from six feet to eight feet. And this is what it would look like in a visual setting. This is really the only thing that would be a noticeable change. The other request of the special use permit is for repaving the existing parking and circulation and doing some restriping, because it's fallen into disrepair, so just to make it more usable. We have also gone ahead, the applicant has gone ahead and taken a look at their landscaping at the request of the city, and replaced some landscaping where the trees and vegetation were kind of failing, so those have been replaced. But again, we're really here for kind of a minor request, just the increase in the fence height and also the repaving of the existing circulation. I'm here for questions. We could occur with everything that's in the staff report and the conditions, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. We'll call you back with questions. Heather? Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Johnson and Plankton Commissioners. Heather Manzo, associate planner for the record. Just for a brief locational kind of overview of where the site is located, it's at Western Link to the north with generally industrial development to the north and west of it, and along Link as well. There is the city park that Carrie referenced in her presentation, and then within 300 feet are residences to the south. And so this request is for the site improvements that are considered development, that is for reconstruction of a portion of the parking lot on the north side of the building, as well as the condition amendment request for the increase in fence height. In the application, the applicant had noted that because Newport Lane, which is located to the south of the site, sits above the elevation of the Sierra Palette site, the six-foot fence really isn't working to sufficiently screen the current operations from view of the residences to the south and from Newport Lane. And so they've made that request before you this evening. Staff has reviewed the request and is recommending approval, as noted in the modified conditions of amendment that were placed on the project from 2016 in the staff report. Those modifications include the applicant's request, as well as some other conditions recommended to either be modified or added to further clarify future operations on the subject site. This was presented before the Ward 4 NAB, and the feedback provided by the NAB was in support of the request. I did receive one phone call from a concerned resident within the area, and their concerns were generally that the pallets appear to be stacked too tall, 12 feet or, or higher, that there may be work conducted outside out of the allowed operational hours, and that trucks are accessing the site using Newport Lane. And I do not believe that there is any prohibition of use of Newport Lane at this time, and there's not a condition on the project. That was a comment that staff received after the staff report had been prepared. And we can ask the applicant for clarification on their circulation plans and standards for getting trucks to and from the property if the commission chooses to do so. So that does wrap up my presentation. Again, we are recommending approval of the request as outlined in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Once again, I'll start by asking the commissioners for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins, familiar with the site and spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, I'm familiar with the site, and I was actually at the NAB meeting.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
Not on this item.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment on this item? I see none. I will close that and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioners, who'd like to get us started? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. For applicants' representatives, please. I didn't see anything in my package as far as approval from fire department or the police. That seems to be a concern when it goes over six feet.
I'm actually going to let staff address that. Heather Manzo, associate planner for the record, I'm just going to flip to the public services portion of the staff report, so I can specifically address any comments they may have had for you. So with regard to the Reno Police Department, no concerns were identified. The improvement seemed to be something that would enhance the area, noting that the, the parking lot improvements are kind of in bad condition at this point. And I did coordinate with the fire department very upfront because of another part of the request that was later withdrawn. And so comments from the Reno Fire Department at this time, based on the request that has been made, they didn't note any concerns with the pallet stacking. There was a fire inspection that was conducted within the past month or two on the site, and there was a short list of items that they asked the applicant to address, and I do believe that that has been addressed at this time. So there were no concerns related to the
that that has been addressed at this time. So there were no concerns related to the potential increase in the pallet stacking on site to that eight-foot height.
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking is I witnessed the pallet company burn to its ground out in Sted two weeks ago. So that's my concern about the height of the fence.
That's duly noted, and as the applicant has shown on their site plan, this is an emergency access drive that goes around both the outdoor storage area, which is where the palettes are stored, and their parking area where they can store trucks and things of that nature. So that is 20 feet wide, and that was a part of the inspection that the fire department conducted recently.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather, I just have one quick question. In the NAB comments, there was reference to a burner and being a good neighbor. Can you explain that, please? Yeah, that's the portion of the application that's been withdrawn. So originally, the special use permit included the addition of an incinerator that would be placed on site. As we went through the process with the fire department and evaluated what the standards were for that incinerator, it actually, where it was proposed to be placed on the property and actually the property as a whole wouldn't have met the distance requirements from combustible materials, buildings, or residential property. So that was removed from the request.
Mr. Marshall?
Oh. I have a question actually for Arlo on this one. And this is in keeping with my question from before. So if I'm understanding it, what we're looking at here is a, it's a modification to some degree to an existing special use permit, but without the incinerator portion, this is a special use permit for an additional two feet of fence height. Is this one of the items that we're looking at as part of the code update that would be going through site plan review or administrative rather than coming to planning commission?
In concept, yes.
I'm going to hit your mic.
My apologies. Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. In concept, this yes would be something that could be handled administratively. I believe in this case it was a condition of approval for a prior SUP that required modification, so that's what triggered it here. But these are the types of things that we would like to streamline procedurally and maybe do an administrative approval with notifications, so any concerned neighbors could appeal it up to here.
Just in following up on my desire to have more examples of some of the changes that we're looking at, so never let an opportunity pass by. So, thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
In the matter of LDC 19-00064, based upon compliance with applicable special use findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I think you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, item number 7.3, case number LDC 19-00071, Comstock cottages Phase 2. Start with a presentation from the applicant.
Thank you. We okay here on volume? Is that, okay. Good, good evening, commissioners. And Commissioner Taylor, welcome to the commission. It's been a while, and I look forward to working with you. So this, I know that there's a couple of new commissioners and certainly a few things that go back to everybody's term on this commission, because we had MVE several times, and then to the north, and cottages Phase 1, so we'll touch on all of that this evening. Tonight, the subject is the 196 lot townhome project with the SUPs, related SUPs. We have several of them. Hillside Development, Clustering, Grading, and I actually believe there is one for a townhome project. The full team is here this evening. Mr. Fitzgerald, as you know, he's been at it quite a while on this property. His Vice President, John Wolfe, and then Jason Gilzer, Civil Engineer, and Lauren Chilson as well, if we get into any of the technical questions. Is this, oh, we're just doing it with the, is that right? Hypersensitive. There is the site, you know, to the south is Phase 1, that's cottages Phase 2, and you guys know the surroundings pretty well, and then of course, MVE to the north. Zoning wise, we spent a fair amount on this, and I'd like to touch on it, because this was a very big deal going back to a zone change hearing a couple of years ago with the PC and with city council. But there's a, the reason that's not a clean edge there, that SF6 boundary at the south end, little bit choppy, was because of our rollback. And then the prior balance of Comstock is SF4. And then it goes back to SF4 further to the north, certainly by any measure compatible with the surroundings, right? We have some of that lower density in the Comstock neighborhood on the one property line, and then the higher density in this There's the product, project concept in a bit more detail. Basically, it's 5.4 dwellings per acre. Obviously, that's very low when you're talking about this type of product, but it's no great mystery because we have tons of open space due to the constraints and the way we have created this site design with this map. So we have four parking spaces per home. That's a very big issue with respect to what the market wants. Footprint mapping is the townhomes, then everything else is common area, three and four bedroom units, includes the neighborhood park, includes native open space. Obviously, that's to do the carve-outs for the rock-out croppings, and then enhanced open space, trails, and then the revegetated open space. So that kind of gives you a good composite of what's going on. I think one of the biggest things I've heard from, you know, we've had a host of neighborhood meetings with those areas where I show Prospect Hill and then University Ridge over the years, and people want to know about the circulation. And we've said, when we get to Phase 2 Comstock, the circulation element will be complete, and this is what does it. We've accepted a condition. You see there on the north end of my map, you leave the Comstock Phase 2 property, and we have a connection over to MVE. That is actually a collector street standard. That's kind of the backbone here that provides the punch-through up to Par Boulevard and the connection down to Comstock Drive with related improvements. Significant issue with staff, with the planning commission, with city council, and with the neighborhood. And so I want to make sure we all understand that kind of wraparound. Boundary road, that is George Sullivan Parkway, and that is what completes all of the circulation. This is very sensitive. This map, I think would be important to the, let's see, one, two, three, four commissioners that were part of that process. So the north boundary is the old zoning line. And once upon a time, we were in a hearing here, and we had some issues with the comfort level from the commission and staff while I was at the podium, and we just peeled back the zone change. We continued it for a month and came and moved the zoning boundary line request to the south, which is that now existing zoning line. That was a 4.5 acre rollback, if you will. And the idea was, you know, we had vague information, but we knew certainly that with Phase 1, we were avoiding rock-out croppings, and what we said was with Phase 2, we would further avoid rock-out croppings. That's exactly what's reflected in this map, right? You got, and I did the visual, the aerial overlay so that you could see avoidance with zoning, and then when we did our site planning and our site design for Phase 2, you see complete avoidance with the rock-out croppings. Perhaps the single biggest issue in the public process for the last map, and certainly put forth the vision in this map. So I'm talking about, that is the key rock-out cropping, and then this one here. And you do see we've made good use without, of the open space, because there's, like I said, I think there's 65, or actually 70% open space. So we do have a nice little pathway of trails connecting north, south, and then all of the elements around the property. Overall circulation in a bigger picture, I think this was important, equally as important was, if you look at, I talked about the punch-through, if you go up there, intersection 1 is Par Boulevard and Far River Cloud, so you have a nice connectivity that way. Then on the south, intersection 2 is Comstock. That will be a new intersection. It will be a lot more going on there when these, when this whole area develops. And then if you look at intersection 5, that's the one where we have agreed to a voluntary condition back in Phase 1, and now it's Condition 9 with really four subsets in your staff report that were, again, a high level of concern with the community, and so we committed to that with staff. You know, that's the, basically that leg between the entry point and down to Virginia Street, the charros for the south, the downhill side, remember that? The intersection improvements with the drop lane going northbound on Virginia Street at Prospector, the widening of the road because there's a capacity issue, that is a collector street. And then the other one was the sidewalks. There's not connectivity. So now we have complete connectivity for bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles going north, south, in these directions with a connection to the university. I mean, there's a, there's a huge buyer group here that would be feeding into that, so we have a very complete plan. Little different perspective on topography. I just like to show a slope map because it just simply pops what's going on here. 0 to 15% mostly green, so you can see that's where our units are. That's what our code wants us to cluster, which is what we've done. And then the constrained parts that are the darker colors are the more constrained area, and the avoidance areas. And then you see on the bottom of the screen, a cross-section that shows obviously a lot of open space and a lot of conformance to the topographic conditions and whatever constraints that we have on the property. There is product, you guys are familiar with this from Phase 1 and from MVE. So we have single-family detached on both of these. It's been very well received, and pricing has been, I think it's, I think Mr. Fitzgerald is the price leader in the Reno area on offering single-family detached or townhome product. So it's been very well, working very well in the market. There's the attached. Of course, that's what we're trying to accomplish with this map. The other one is an option. And then there is also one of the, the attached. And just master plan by way of background, it does allow age of the acre and then in gross density on the master plan, but certainly all compliant. I think it's important to commission to note that staff pointed it out, I have two in my own analysis, that there's, you know, 20 citywide goals and policies from the master plan that are supported in this project as proposed, and 16 specific policies that are advanced. I think that's important and significant. 36 policies of which we collectively point to that are supported in this project. So that's all I have, commissioners. Thank you for your time, and here for any questions, certainly our technical experts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll call you back up after we hear from staff. Brooke, welcome back.
Thank you. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. As was stated, you did hear this Comstock cottages, or the cottages at Comstock on December 6, 2008. That case was LDC 170045. It did take about, you know, that year or more to get that project through. A lot of that was working with that grading and hillside development and what that project would look like. Through that effort, they have, they responded in this next project and really applied those same staff comments that they worked for through over that year on this project. Staff did receive one phone call. It was informational related. They were interested in the connectivity. Were concerned that Comstock would loop back around onto Comstock. I explained to them would go around the hill and eventually hook into Par Boulevard. They were very comfortable with that. They also were concerned about the improvements that were, as were mentioned by the applicant's representative, the improvements down Comstock Drive. That includes the charrow, sidewalks, pedestrian improvements, improvements down on Virginia. I explained that those were carried over into this. Staff did carry those conditions over into this, just in case this was developed first prior to the other one, we would get those improvements when we saw development on that hillside, being very important that we made sure that that connectivity and that pedestrian connectivity happened with either project. As demonstrated, the applicant has avoided all major rock-out croppings, minimized the overall density of the project, reduced the grading, and provided ample open space per the Hillside Development Ordinance. This isn't conforming with RMC and the master plan policy. Was shown in the thing, a formalized park is going to be provided for the residents, and the trail system will be open to the public. There has been, there was a modification that the applicant requested. Staff worked with them on two specific conditions, Condition 11. That is really just to clarify that street standard, the width. They had concerns that it wasn't as clear and how that would be. The applicant's representative worked with engineering staff to confirm that, and staff and the applicant's representative are comfortable with that. The second one is number 15. That deals with a wall down along the railroad track there. Staff met with the applicant's representative on that. There are areas of large cuts and other things that would act as sound barriers and that, and so we didn't want to constrain them completely to a wall, and fences could be used in certain areas. So it gives that recommendation using the environmental noise assessment that was done on Phase 1 to make that determination along those households. With the information provided and the conditions as written and the modifications as proposed, staff can make all applicable findings and recommends approval of the special use permit and tentative map. Staff and engineering staff are available for comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. I do have several request to speak forms on this item, so before I open it up to public comment, I'm going to ask the commissioners for disclosures. Start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site and spoke with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson, I previously visited the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
Mr. Hawkins, visited the site, spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, previously visited the site and corresponded briefly with that applicant's representative.
Okay, I have a couple of request to speak forms here. Please, just a reminder, since we haven't had a whole lot tonight, when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record, and you'll have the three minutes, starting with Bonnie Kennedy.
Thank you. Bonnie Kennedy, I live at 60 Greenstone Drive. Before I begin, I just want to say that I know my comments won't make any difference today because the decision is already made. You guys are going to approve what you've already previously approved through all of the meetings. And I've spoken to several of our neighbors about this, and their consensus is, why should we come? Our comments make no difference to anybody. We come, we say no to the traffic, know this and know that, and it still gets approved. The same, and this has been going on since the first time that Mr. Fitzgerald came with the zoning change. So this has all been inevitable. But Phase 1 is 280-plus units. This one's 194. Currently, there's only 220 houses in that whole side west of Socrates. So this doubles our neighborhood, which doubles the traffic, which doubles all of that. And I'm just here to be the broken record about the traffic. And what it's going to do, the traffic study that was done, was done north of the railroad tracks, which doesn't include any of the traffic that comes out of the north parking lot at UNR or the daycare facility at Annanelli, or the houses that live south of there that use Comstock. We're glad and thank you for putting the condition on for the, for the change in the intersection at North Virginia and, and Comstock. The, the traffic, the density up there of everything that's going to come down and filter through there, that has the possibility to come down through Par, down through there and onto Comstock, and I don't know how you're going to manage the traffic. The traffic is already crazy up there. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next is Jason Stokes. Next is Jason Stokes.
Yeah, Jason Stokes, 3506 Comstock, I live at the top of Comstock. I did come in late to some of these meetings, obviously, it's phase one's been approved, phase two's going through. I too have a concern with traffic. Right now, the top of Comstock, we had to put a gate to stop traffic from the other developments, you know, ridge to Comstock. That gate was recently moved to see how the traffic was, it doubled traffic down Comstock. That Comstock is not ready for any traffic. This is the first time I've seen the map, knowing that the main entrance, I guess, is going to be Par Boulevard, which is going to really hurt us coming off McCarran, trying to get on 395. Right now, Par Boulevard, McCarran is hectic. I'm right there at 5:30 in the morning, six o'clock, it is hard to get on that road, on the freeway. Now that our on-ramp has been taken away at McCarran, it's a gamble. You're going to put double the people in that going main entrance up to Par Boulevard, come down south, it's going to hurt us. People are going to start dividing and staying away from Par Boulevard, going down towards south of Comstock, toward the railroad tracks. There's not enough room under that bridge, four more traffic, as Bonnie stated, coming out of UNR right now, you come down through there, four o'clock in the afternoon, it takes fifteen, twenty minutes to get to the stoplight. That stoplight's not long enough, it's not big enough, it's not accommodating for this kind of traffic. Doubling our residents up there now with the UNR traffic is ridiculous. So people don't want to go to Par, come down north. That is, it's a six o'clock in the morning, it's 20 miles an hour. People are going to come down Comstock, south, hit that stoplight to Virginia, same scenario, we're going to be backed up in there. This is a big funnel, there is only two ways in and out of this whole subdivision up there, and they're pinched between our subdivision, our housing and the road tracks. There's only two ways in, two ways out, up once Par, up north, down south is Comstock. All the roads going east and west are private roads, people are going to start taking those. They're going to start jumping over the hills and jumping through people's private property and go in that direction, I have a concern with that. I realize that I'm late in the side of it, and Bonnie's been fighting for a long time for this, but it's time we say that, no, we don't need this up there, it's a bottleneck, we're sandwiched in between railroad tracks, residential, and there's no way for people to get in and out of there. We had more traffic in there, 395 is going to get doubled, Comstock's going to get doubled, and we're, as residents up there, we want to be peaceful, quiet, are going to get sandwiched out. And I really don't think we need that development up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Next, just thank you.
Oh.
Sorry. Next is Sean Gephardt.
My name is Sean Gephardt, G-E-P-H-A-R-T, for the record. I am the Nevada Department of Agriculture's Noxious Weeds Coordinator. What is a noxious weed? It is a plant that has been found to be difficult to control, detrimental, destructive to habitat, and listed in state statute as requiring controls. At the site, at the phase two site, the site is infested with a Class A, excuse me, Category A noxious weed, Yellow Star Thistle. It's covering approximately about eighty percent of the site, and I'm not here to support and endorse the development of the site. What I am here to talk to you about today is my concern about during the construction process, what is, what's going to happen with the contaminated fill. I don't know if it's going to be moved off-site, I don't know if it's going to be buried, but whatever the case may be, that is a contaminated field, it's going to be filled with noxious weed seeds. This produces an ample amount of seeds, it's an annual plant, so it reproduces from seed yearly. So I just wanted you to be aware of it, that is infested with noxious weeds, Yellow Star Thistle, and I'm just concerned about the contaminated fill and what's going to happen with that. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sean, do we have any additional request to speak forms on this item?
Not on this item.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for questions, who'd like to get us started.
Brooke.
Wait, I'm sorry, I just received a public comment card for this item, but it's not to speak, it's just to be read into the record.
Okay, I'll read that into the record before we indulge me, Commissioner Marshall, thank you. So, this is from Linda Cross, do any of members take into consideration the impact of additional traffic, children in school, public transportation, and clustering people in such small areas? I see at least 764 more people just for the 196 townhomes, 5.4 dwelling units per acre and eight dwelling units per acre, just squeezes everyone together so tightly, it only produces lack of neighborliness. Okay, very much. Okay, Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. Brooke, please. I'd like to first talk about schools. And maybe it's, I think it can be a little bit of a broken record, I apologize, but first, the analysis for Ranchera and the analysis that we got from Washoe County School Districts for this project use different factors for elementary, you know, for multiplying the units times the number of students.
Yes.
Why is that?
You know, I haven't, I don't know what their exact calculations are and why they were doing that, I would probably anticipate that they are looking that you have a younger family-oriented demographic in this area versus the Ranchera area, therefore seeing more students generated out of that. But that would really be, I have no explanation from Washoe County of why they're using different numbers.
Okay. I've been harping on the fact that our disclosures from the school district do not provide actually any information about, relevant information about when this project will come online, what the actual situation will be, not actual, but expected situation will be in addition with other potential developments coming online at the same time. And so what we have with this one in particular is we're up in the high, mid and, mid and yeah, lower nineties percent with just this school, if it's added to current base year, but we know this is not going to be added to current base year, it's going to be added to some future year. So is there anything else in the record besides what we have here that allows a finding of consistency with public school availability other than what the Washoe County School District has provided us?
I have not been provided any additional information, Arlo, we should speak on this.
If I could, one of the follow-up items later on the agenda, your request for additional information on schools. I spoke with Adam Circe at the school district, they are going to work to expand their review letters, but he strongly emphasized that with their new funding structure, they do not have concerns about school capacity with any of these applications. They have sufficient funding, they have a lot of new schools programmed to come online, and he just really emphasized to me that if they do have any concerns, they will certainly include it in the letters, and they will work to provide a little more information on that topic with their review letters moving forward. I see this letter was transmitted before we had that discussion, so it doesn't have that, but he was, just to be clear, very clear that they're just fine on school capacity, unlike in prior years before they had that funding mechanism.
So, Arlo, if I could continue with that, because the statement I think you're referring to is on top of page nine, which is as new, improved and expanded schools are needed due to development approved by each jurisdiction, Washoe County School District will provide needed facilities for K through 12 students. Now, that statement is basically saying, well, when, we'll build it when they come, and what you're saying is they have adequate money and sites, et cetera, to accomplish just a blanket statement that for, we can approve any subdivision and they've got money to deal with it.
With the caveat that if there are subdivisions that are problematic for them, they will flag that in their review letters, but these were just fine, I think they, we may be looking at a different letter here, but they were, the Wild Creek High School and some other facilities coming online, they're very comfortable with the school situation in this part of the community.
It would be great if they could have a letter that actually says that, because that's not what this letter says, we have nothing in the record that's actually allows me to make the finding other than your oral comment, so thank you for that.
They did commit to expand upon those letters moving forward.
Okay. And then, is there, I'm trying to remember, Brooke, I don't, I don't think there's a specific response in the staff summary to the Washoe County Health ozone.
There is not a specific comment to that, that would be that denser housing, that proximity to the university and available units. Staff has spoken with the applicant, and the applicant speaks for themselves of the possibility of providing a certain portion of the units with electrical vehicle ready, as we had on a current, or a recent project, the Holcombe Ranch Project, they have spoke to that, they would have to, you know, speak to the record to that.
Okay. Can I get John up and could you speak to that?
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall, yes, I frankly just forgot, because we talked about it today, and certainly were agreeable, we accepted this condition, we proposed the condition in the prior phase and willing to do so here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Commissioners, additional questions? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I have a question for the applicant's representative specifically to traffic, Lauren, please. I think I need additional help to make finding D with the traffic, could you explain that just a little bit more with the access and the improvements that are going to happen with this project?
Absolutely. Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation. So the project does include a very important roadway connection to the north, as was mentioned, going out to Par Boulevard. And with that connection made, then there will be, actually be three major connections for the entire area, so Socrates, Comstock, and the George Ferris, Ferrari MacLeod connection up to Par Boulevard.
Is there a map you could throw up just so we can visualize that as well?
How am I doing now, a little better?
No, a little, can you throw up a map?
Oh.
Or put up a map or something?
I have the old head. So again, three connections and I'll point them out. We did complete a comprehensive traffic analysis for all of those connections, the roadway is shown. That analysis did include intersection five, which is Comstock and Virginia. The intersection turning movement accounts at that intersection, incorporate everything behind it, including UNR, all of the existing neighborhood. We have included in that analysis the phase one project, the project itself, and also traffic from Mountain View Estates four and Mountain View Estates three, which some of that traffic would be assigned slightly different now that the connection's made, that traffic could actually come down to Comstock, but conversely, existing neighborhood traffic could actually go north to Par as well, which it cannot do today. So one of the comments we heard over the, you know, the years of this project was, there's only one way in and one way out of here, and what about emergencies, and what about snow conditions, and what about all those things? Valid comments, but they're now addressed by this north connection, and so it's an important one in my mind. All things considered, the intersection, we have major improvements planned, they're conditioned with phase one, that condition was also carried through to phase two, let me show that. Those are shown in the lighter gray are the proposed improvements conditioned by phase one and phase two, in case two goes before phase one. With those improvements, the intersection functions at policy level service D are better with the project in the ten-year horizon. So there are no significant impacts to mitigate because these improvements take care of those issues, and the connections are made. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Lauren, before you stop down, do you have a view of that also at the, the work that's required at the underpass and the railroad crossing? Is that shown in your exhibit as well, the charros and the widening and the?
It's in here, but the exhibit is tiny and...
Michelle's got a heck of a zoom on that thing, I'm sure.
Let's, let's test it out, if this may be the opportunity. I'm impressed, I have to admit. So what you see in that lower part of exhibit one is an uphill bike lane, a downhill charrow markings, and remember, bikes can travel similar to the same speeds as vehicles going downhill, it's uphill where you want that separation and additional safety, so that's why the uphill bike lane, the downhill charrow. And then you see pedestrians there on the new sidewalk that would connect all the way from Virginia Street to the project site entrance, and you can see those above as well, the new sidewalk shown on the left or west side of Comstock and the new bike lane all the way up on the east side of Comstock, so that full pedestrian bike connection is made.
And does that include, and forgive me, I believe it's in here, but does that include a widening or change at the railroad crossing itself?
Those improvements fit within the bridge piers of the ender crossing. That width is actually greater than the right-of-way that's up towards the north end, the bridge piers are forty feet apart, and these improvements fit between.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, additional questions? Thank you, Lauren. Commissioner Gower.
Mr. Chairman, we had a public comment about weed infestation of the soils, and it appears that the gentleman who made the comment left, I was going to ask him to follow up on that to see what that might look like in a condition, but Brooke or John, do you have any thoughts on that? Let me ask Brooke first, is that a concern from the city's perspective, that we're going to be moving soils with an invasive weed in it?
Certainly, that comment was a very valid comment within this, being a landscape architect, having those concerns, having written noxious weed conditions within some of the projects that I've had. I think that we could determine some sort of noxious weed, you know, that control of them on-site. It gets harder with the off-site soils, but I could probably come up with something that could limit that off-site soils or something like that. So I would have to talk to the applicant and see what they would be agreeable to.
And John, let me ask you first, are we talking about moving soils off the site?
Yeah, yes, we are.
Okay, yeah.
And those would go to, and, you know, there's a state program for managing noxious weeds, so I mean, I think this is just implicit in development process, process to manage this.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is do we have, do we have protocols in place that this concern is addressed, or is this a unique circumstance where as a city, as a local government, that we need to apply some sort of condition to address the concern?
And I think it's for whatever, maybe he lives in the proximity, you said the gentleman left the, the area, right? I forget his name, Gardella, but I think it's just because he happens to be aware of this one that does have a high presence of noxious weeds, but we've got a system to manage this. Our engineer, I mean, we're all here thinking, what, there's nothing that needs any additional attention drawn to it.
Let me follow up with Arlo, and then with the commission, and we'll see, see if we need to go any further with it.
If that's important, we'll do it, but I think it's important to be consistent in managing this kind of stuff, and I think we have a process.
If I could, Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director, noxious weeds are a problem throughout the state and a growing problem. I would recommend if there is soil to be exported off-site, that the topsoil be stripped first, kept on-site, and either treated or buried, and that any soil taken off-site be subsurface soil that isn't as infested with the seeds. If you bury the seeds, it's fine, but if you take them and spread them out and reapply them somewhere else, they'll be everywhere.
Arlo, is this a standard that the city uses on other projects, or, I know we see these sites and they've got to have, this can't be the first one that has a weed infestation issue.
It's everywhere.
Yeah.
It's everywhere, it's a real problem. I think it's something that we should look at in the updated code, kind of having some standard management approaches for noxious weeds. weeds that get disturbed. If you deal with them properly, it's not a problem. You can bury them. You can chemically treat them. But again, if you take that topsoil and spread it around somewhere else, there's going to be more thistle popping up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up on that line of questioning and see where the rest of the commission stands on that, if there's concern or appetite for an extra condition to address the weed issue. My concern is that I don't...similar to where we've gone with the EV charge-ready, which I fully support, and I fully support doing something about the weeds, but I want to make sure that, as a commission, we're not overstepping our authority in any way, and make sure that this is something that we have the right and, you know, makes sense to address.
Anyone else want to take that on first?
I guess, as a...on one hand, I agree that it's something that should be addressed. On the other hand, I'm not so sure that it's a condition that I'm willing to put on, mainly for more reason than anything else, that I think there are some things in place, processes in place to do this. So, as far as putting a condition, I'm wondering if it falls in under the same category as some of our code-related items, where if we put a condition in there to comply with the, you know, requirements for noxious weed, are we basically stating something that is a requirement for permit or not? And that I don't know. And it doesn't sound like it's totally clear to that degree either. And I don't know if...I don't think engineering's the one that addresses that. But if there was a condition that basically just indicated compliance with something that's not already required compliance, then yes, I think that is something that we could condition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, can I ask you a quick question? Are you going to have to get permits for this? Like Washoe County permits, dust permits, environmental permits, BMP permits?
All of that, right. The standard set of subdivision permitting.
I don't know, but I would imagine somewhere within those permitting processes that this is going to be addressed. This is the first time that it...
Our engineer, I mean, Jason and I have worked together for years about the way we deal with this, right? You harvest the soil, the topsoil is the stuff that you don't want to...it's going to be scarified, turned over. I'm not sure how to manage this gentleman's concern, unique to this. I don't think there's anything unique here. And if it's a big deal to you guys, we'll accept a condition. But I'm just saying, we have so many processes in the final mapping and the permitting process at the next stage to manage this.
Thank you. I think to your comment, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like there might already be a process in place that deals with this specifically. Thank you.
Brooke, I was all the associate planner for the record. In the past, we have put conditions on applicants to provide a noxious weed management program. That program could would encompass the state restrictions and everything else on that, and then that would be submitted with their building pit permit to be reviewed, and that may be a way forward with this.
And Brooke, that covers the grading component of it or the...
Yeah, we could...it could...you know, that management program could cover the entire grading, the off-site, the off-site disposal of soils and all of that, so.
Okay. Any...Mr. Marshall?
I'm comfortable with Brooke's suggestion, or just a simple condition that says follow BMPs for noxious weed control. But that may be a little more meat on the bones with submitting their own plan if it's a standard approach.
If you guys don't mind, I'd like to volunteer a condition, Mr. Chairman, and just to make everybody comfortable.
What, are you trying to cut our discussion short, John?
No, no.
No, no, I'm joking with you, please.
Yes. No, but I mean, there's a lot of attention drawn to it. It sounds like it's significant. I'm confident, but if you're not, that's okay. We respect that. And let's deal with the condition as Commissioner Marshall proposed.
Additional comments? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Gower?
Case of LDC 19-00071. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and special use permit subject to the conditions, including the addition of the submittal of a noxious weed management plan? And...
The two modified comment, two modified conditions as well.
And the modified conditions as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. I have a motion.
May staff just clarify, was there...are we doing a condition for the EV or the electric vehicle ready within the units and a percentage for that, just to be state that on the record?
What John committed to and...
Yeah? You're comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And what was the percentage of that again was?
Can you get up to the microphone? John, thank you.
Something like that, right?
Okay.
Can you state that in the microphone, please, so we have it on the record?
I think it'd be responsible, right? Because you look at about 2% of new vehicle sales are EV now. And if it grows by a lot, say 25%, or 20% or 25%, I mean, there's some cost impact here, and that would be, I think, a huge surplus of EV-ready units.
Okay. So, how do you do...okay. Commissioner Marshall, how do you feel about that?
I feel fine. I think it's...I think what he was saying, it's just 20% of the units are EV-ready.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, thanks, John.
Thank you.
With the addition of a condition that 20% of the units be electric vehicle charging-ready.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. I have a motion with some added conditions and modified conditions. Looking for a second?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second. There are additional discussion items.
Commissioner Levis, I guess I got some concern on the EV, and if I recall correctly, maybe Arlo can help me out here. But didn't City Council actually have debate as to whether they wanted that as part of the policy going forward? And was I wrong on what I remember on that or not?
Their direction was not to make it a code requirement for all projects. I think in this instance, with agreement of the applicant, it wouldn't be unreasonable.
And I guess, yeah, with agreement of the applicant and with the limitations that they have. But I think that that's taken us down a path where we're going contrary to City Council's policy, and we're pushing our own agenda for whatever that may be down to developers, and they all haven't been having it. So, I'm not comfortable starting to push those, that onto everybody. If they want to do that as part of their marketing campaign, I could see that, and I could see a benefit to that. But I think that it's a cost that for us to be pushing that on everybody and us to be making that policy decision, even especially since it's contrary to City Council's, I don't like that path that we're headed down. So, they're willing to accept it, and you guys are proposing it. So, I'll still vote for this, but I think that I don't like that direction as far as the planning commission heading that way.
Thank you, Commissioner Levis. Commissioner Gower, do you want to respond to that as part of the discussion?
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, if I could, and I feel like that's a valid point. I understand where Council went with that at their last meeting, and that's why I think that at our next policy meeting, and I asked Arlo if we could bring that back and have that discussion because I think that's important. And it is a policy question, and it's not necessarily something that we should be pushing on developers without some sort of policy backing. So, I do think that Council has agreed to certain things with the adoption of certain plans and commitments to certain resolutions, and we're trying to implement those. So, we need that additional direction from Council. I feel that in this case, we have a developer who's making a goodwill effort to move in that direction and provide support going, you know, not only seeing the market, potential market demand for that type of vehicle, but kind of getting out ahead of the curve and being a good steward for the community. So, you know, I would certainly support that and encourage developers to continue to fulfill that role. So, I just wanted to put that on the record, Mr. Chairman. A lot of dynamics there, and I think there's going to be a need for continued discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. One comment I want to make, and this...Commissioner Taylor, appreciate you asking the question about the traffic. I think this has been a difficult site from the beginning, from a traffic standpoint. And I still have some concerns. We had them in the first one, but I think this one with the additional connection to the north, I think starts to address this. We've had direction...speaking of direction from Council, we've had direction from Council in terms of additional housing units. We've had direction from Council in the master plan in terms of additional density. And we're going to be running into situations like this where we are adding density to neighborhoods. And there's some concerns, and there's some growing pains. And I think this is a particularly glaring situation of that because of the limited access points that we have here. We've asked questions of the traffic engineer every time that he's been here. He's reviewed the numbers. There are some unique situations here with the university. But I think, based on everything that we're seeing and with the connection, we are creating a situation that is going to be better, certainly in the short term. In the long term, at full build-out, I'm thinking, you know, we may be at a sort of a standstill in terms of what we have now and where we're going to be with the level of service that's there. So, I do still struggle a little bit with Finding D, but I think that we have done, put the requirements on this project to the greatest extent possible in order to comply with what this is from a master planning standpoint. So, I understand the concerns. I think they're very valid concerns, and I think everything that's happening here is not in place yet. So, I think I'm looking at this and looking at the numbers and believe that this is going to be a more minimal impact than is originally anticipated in looking at the number of homes that are there. So, based on that, I am able to make that finding, but will be, you know, hoping that that is put in place as soon as possible and works the way that it's been talked about. So, if there's no further comments, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will read into the record the appeal process. Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal together with fees must be filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. And if the 10th calendar day falls on a weekend or a holiday when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed on the next business day. Okay. With that, Michelle, I would like to take a brief 10-minute break. We've been here for over two hours since the last break. So, with that, I'll ask that we take a recess and come back at 20 minutes to 9:00.
No, thank you, I'm all right. I also have a pile of them up here.
All right, Michelle, you all ready over there?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Well, then we will bring the Planning Commission back to order, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is case number 7.4, case number LDC 19-00074, the Lakewood Tennis Club Zone Change. Start with a presentation from the applicant. Andy, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Derling, representing the applicant for the Lakewood Tennis Club zoning map amendment. Just to give you some wayfinding, the Lakewood Tennis Club is located on the south side of South McCarran Boulevard between Lakeside and Plumas, highlighted in the green here. Looking closer at it, it consists of three parcels, one small parcel in the south that has a sport court on it, the main body of the tennis club, which has the building and the majority of the tennis courts, and then a frontage parcel along McCarran. Requested tonight is a zoning map amendment from specific plan district SPD to community commercial CC on the 9.5-acre site. This site is identified in the new Reimagined Reno Master Plan as suburban mixed use, the underlying land use is suburban mixed use. From the master plan, it states that this provides for an opportunity for a broader mix of uses in a more suburban context while also preserving opportunities for higher-density infill and redevelopment, and furthermore provides opportunities for higher-density housing within the close proximity to services and employment. The site is currently zoned SPD-specific plan developments, specific plan developments are not actually supported in code any longer and are kind of a little bit of archaic use of specialized zoning. And so the SPDs were originally created to address uses that maybe weren't addressed elsewhere in code or for very specific types of uses in order to better fit them into neighborhoods and things like that. So in this case, this SPD was established in the early 1980s. The site was built in the late 1970s. We believe that in the 1980s, they established the SPD mainly because the apartments to the south, there was a concept to start converting them into timeshares. You'd have these timeshares and this tennis recreation timeshare element, and the timeshares, I believe, were not something that was contemplated in code in the early 1980s. And so the SPD was a mechanism for them to create a specialized zoning district in order to address that specific use. Oftentimes, you guys see PUDs, planning developments. Planning developments oftentimes are much larger in code that requires that they're over 10 acres in size. Additionally, they deal with a multitude of uses. As you saw earlier, Ranchera had a mix of commercial or different types of residential uses, recreation uses, all within the context of a kind of a master plan community. So in this case, it really was the SPD for the Lakewood Tennis Club really only allows a very narrow band of uses. It allows for the tennis club, it allows for 320 apartment units, and it allows for those 320 apartment units to be converted into timeshares. So those really are just the only three uses that are allowed in the SPD. And so really, now that we're coming to a time in the history of the Lakewood Tennis Club where, you know, it's in financial difficulties and there's a need to look to redevelopment options, there really is not an option in the current zoning code in this SPD for this in order to seek out other redevelopment options. So what we have requested is a zone change to community commercial, the CC zoning conforms to and supports the Reimagined Reno Master Plan. It's appropriate next to major arterials like McCarran and at two signalized intersections at McCarran and Plumas, McCarran and Lakeside. It is compatible with the surrounding uses. There's a mix of higher-density residential as well as general office, where the general office has a number of commercial uses in it. It also allows for continued operations of the tennis club, the fitness center, as well as the restaurant that's in the tennis club, which is unique, and it also allows for other redevelopment options on the property. We had a public meeting, a neighborhood meeting, as part of our outreach efforts for this. In addition to going to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, we had over 200 people attend that meeting, and we shared this exhibit with them because oftentimes, you know, at this stage in the development process, we are just dealing with zoning, or we're looking to change colors on a map, to put it very simplistically. And we shared with them kind of what our future project goals are, what our applicant's future project goals are to redevelop this. Our goals are to retain and improve the existing club, restaurant and fitness center, outdoor pool, which, I'm sorry, the retained area is in the lighter blue here. So the outdoor pool, these six tennis courts, and the main portion of the fitness center and club, which includes the restaurant. We will look to potentially enclose two of the remaining six tennis courts, probably up in this area, and potentially enclose the outdoor pool on a seasonal basis. We would then redevelop the western portion. The western portion currently consists of indoor tennis courts and a small indoor lap pool and some outdoor tennis courts. So with those indoor pool and indoor tennis courts going away, that kind of is, you know, the justification for going to look for seasonal options to enclose the existing outdoor pool and existing outdoor tennis courts. We would then look to redevelop this western portion with future residential that could include a mix of apartments, condos, and/or a senior living element, whether it's for sale or for rent in an apartment or condominium. At the NAB, the Neighborhood Advisory Board, there are a few questions because, obviously, when we change the zoning from something that's very narrow, in this case, just allowing the fitness center, the tennis club, and the apartments effectively, to something that's standard zoning code like community commercial, there's a multitude of uses that are obviously going to be allowed there that currently aren't allowed there. And there was concern about, in a commercial zoning, that a number of commercial uses would then be allowed. We looked at this early on. We consulted city planning staff and independently kind of came up with the same thought process that community commercial is a good fit for this location and allows for the uses that exist on the site currently as well as the redevelopment options that we're looking at. So the matrix that we prepared here, on the top of the screen, multifamily 30, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, arterial commercial, professional office, general office, those are the zoning districts that are allowed within the suburban mixed use master plan designation. And then on the left side of the matrix are the first three, fitness center, restaurant, and tennis courts. Those are the three existing uses that are in there. And then apartments or condos and townhomes are the proposed uses that we are anticipating. And then the NAB also raised some concerns about building height. So just looking across the matrix, you'll see, in particular, the restaurant, the existing restaurant that is there, doesn't fit within the MF30 nor within the professional office. So those wouldn't work for, they would create non-conforming issues with those current uses. Really, the kind of sweet spot is the commercial zoning districts, neighborhood, community, and arterial commercial, all allow the proposed uses, with the caveat that neighborhood commercial, while it has less intense commercial uses, it also has a much less intense building standard associated with it. So with respect to residential uses, apartments or condos, this code actually requires that those are above the first floor. So the idea is that it's a vertical mixed use. You would have kind of commercial on the bottom floor and residential above that. Furthermore, it only allows for a 35-foot height, two-story. The existing SPD allows for 55 feet in height. So that existing fitness center is, it's kind of a three- or four-story building, how you want to look at it, three full stories, and then it has kind of a penthouse on top. So that 55-foot structure, if we rezoned it to NC, wouldn't, it would also create a non-conforming use. So really, looking at, you know, our community commercial, our arterial commercial as being the ideal zoning districts, arterial commercial allows even more commercial uses than community commercial. So we felt like, you know, kind of stepping it back to community commercial really is the appropriate zoning district. And with the 65-foot height limit in the CC zone, it allows for that existing building, it allows for, you know, a four- to five-story residential use to go in that redeveloped area. So felt very appropriate for this location. We also wanted to, you know, highlight some of the issues that were identified both by the NAB and in our neighborhood meeting. One of those is, as I just hit on, the uses that are allowed in CC. Just to clarify, you know, the kind of resolution to this issue is, any future uses will require some sort of additional permitting and public noticing, whether it's residential requires either a site planner view, special use permit, or a tentative map if it's condos or townhomes. And then all non-residential uses would require a special use permit because the site is adjacent to residentially zoned properties, and that SUP would have to be heard by the Planning Commission. The building height issue, the existing SPD allows up to 55 feet. Both AC and CC are compatible zoning districts that allow, with the master plan, that allow the existing buildings to be conforming while also allowing for these complementary redevelopment concepts to move forward as well. Traffic was raised. In this area, obviously, we're on a major arterial. McCarran carries a high level of traffic in our area. It is our kind of main arterial for the region. Traffic studies would then be required with any future redevelopment that generates more than 100 peak-hour trips. So any, basically, 100 residential units would trigger any type of traffic study, whether it's at a site planner view or a special use permit tentative map level. So there is a check and balance to the traffic as well. Additionally, one of the major concerns that was raised by current and former members of the tennis club, there's definitely a nostalgic connection to the tennis club. It's been around for more than 40 years, and so a lot of the people that we talked to at the neighborhood meeting have been members for almost that long. It's really interesting that, you know, there's that personal connection. And so this zoning allows for continuation of the tennis club, whereas some of the other zoning districts that may be a little less intense, that they don't. And so while the zoning district allows for the redevelopment that we're looking to do, it also allows for the continuation. And so now you get that, you know, those two complementary uses to kind of work off each other in a redevelopment scenario. As we are just in the zoning map amendment stage, this is kind of one step in the overall development process, the zoning map amendment. This is kind of the initial step we need to take, especially with this property because the narrow band of uses that are allowed, again, just kind of those three uses that are allowed in the SPD, something needs to happen, and we're trying to be proactive with this zone change. There's obviously a public process that's involved here, public notification for this meeting tonight. We hosted a neighborhood meeting, and it requires approval, the zoning map amendment requires approval by both this body as well as the city council. If this moves forward or the zoning is changed, then the next step would be either site planner view for apartments or tentative map and a special use permit potentially for condos. That development plan is then, a more developed plan and formalized architectural plan is then presented to the city. Traffic analysis is conducted. It's publicly noticed in any of those situations or scenarios. And in the case of the tentative map for the condos or special use permit for the condos, it would come before this body as well. Once we get past that hurdle, then we will move into the building permit stage, which is kind of the step just before, final step before construction. So we tried to kind of enumerate that, you know, this is just one step in an overall development process along the way. With that, we are in agreement with staff's recommendation and would happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. For a presentation now from staff. Anne Marie, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anne Marie Lane, Assistant Planner, for the record. Thank you, Andy, for the presentation on the project.
The wheel is the only thing that's working.
Okay, thank you. Here we go. So as stated, this is a zoning map amendment request, one for a zoning map amendment from 9.48 acres of Club Lakewood specific plan district to 9.48 acres of community commercial, and also an amendment to the standards of the Club Lakewood SPD to remove the 9.48 acres containing the existing Lakewood Tennis Club from the SPD. Thank you, Michelle. Staff did find that this application is consistent with the master plan. It has It has a master plan designation of suburban mixed use. This site is located along Lakeside Neighborhood Corridor. Most neighborhood corridors are predominantly residential in character, but higher density and/or mixed uses are encouraged where appropriate. This amendment request supports more varied housing options and it transitions in building heightened density to the south. That transition remains intact. Next slide, please. I don't know if it's working. Oh, there we go. Thank you. I'd like to highlight a few of the NAB concerns. Discussion at the NAB meeting included concerns relating to the range of uses allowed in the CC zoning district without a specific development request, traffic impacts on South McCarran and building height. The range of uses, as far as the range of uses in the community commercial zoning district without a specific development request, finding statements for zoning map amendments are tailored to the entire range of uses allowed within a requested zoning district and not on a proposed specific development. That being said, it is a broader use allowed within the CC. Whoops. However, there are some discretionary reviews in place for the more higher density uses. For example, multifamily development of more than four dwelling units would require a site planner view, attached single-family condominium townhouse development of more than four dwelling units would require a site planner view and a special use permit for more than 100 dwelling units. In addition, any non-residential development on the subject site will require a special use permit due to residential adjacency. Moving into the traffic impacts, McCarran Boulevard and Plumas Street operate at a level of service of C. NDOT database shows 24,600 average daily trips along McCarran Boulevard adjacent to the subject site. Staff analyzed potential trips that could be generated under the proposed CC zoning district. This is an estimate, but assuming a tennis club, office and multifamily uses on the subject site, a 2,200 average daily trip increase in traffic volumes could result. Based on engineering's assessment, the level of service is not anticipated to change on McCarran Boulevard or Plumas Street with development under the CC zoning district at that subject site. In addition, any future development of the site will require full traffic impact analysis to determine the effects of the proposed developments, the area and the adjacent street network. As far as building height, CC limits building height to a maximum of 65 feet, which is increased from the maximum height of 55 feet allowed by the SPD. Current development meets the height standards of the CC. Building height is not anticipated to increase shadowing as the nearest residential units to the north are located across South McCarran Boulevard at least 100 feet away. As such, and with conditions, staff was able to make all zoning map amendment findings A through O and finds that the zoning map amendment is in accordance with the master plan. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I do have several requests to speak forums on this item. So before I go to that, I'm going to ask for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited with the applicant's representative and I'm familiar with the site, I live about a mile up the road.
I had a chat with Andy and the applicant's representative as well as the engineer.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
As well as I did and I received an email.
Mr. Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
So I'm going to open up public comment, I have several requests to speak forums, starting
Thank you and allow, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Steve Topol, I live on Spinnaker Drive in Lakewood Shores, I've lived there since 1983, built a house there, live right down the street from the club. And we also own a home, the villas across the street from the tennis club. And my brother Nate and I built Lakewood Tennis Club. My family built all the multifamily housing in Lakewood, according to the plan that was set forth by Mr. Jaxick, Sam Jaxick. He is very specific about what could and couldn't be built there. And my purpose really is, I have nothing against the developer, I'm just trying to preserve my neighborhood. And if that red project size that was shown on the, the map was anyplace other than in Lakewood, you know, then so be it, make an infill project, develop it, do whatever needs to be done. But that project is within the Lakewood development. I should have had a photo that I could put down here for you, so, but I made a huge copy of the sign that comes into Lakewood, there's three or four different monuments coming in there and it all specifies, specifies it's a, a planned community of 900 acres, Lakewood Golf Course. I'll show the audience too, Case.
Anybody wants to see it?
And so we have developed this property and developed, it's a fully mature community. There is no reason for us to have an infill project to be constructed on a portion of this site. There are other options and alternatives available for this site to be purchased by the city, to be purchased by somebody else. I, I just noticed in the paper that the Pennington Foundation just gave the city a $9 million grant for the purpose of building an indoor pool. I don't, and that was up by an application by the city of Reno. They did it. There's, there's an opportunity to purchase this site, which could be used for the city children and, and families, black, white, rich, poor, it could be open to everybody and which would serve a tremendous need for the city. And I would hate to see the tennis courts, the facility demolished when there's such an opportunity for there to be a, a benefit to the entire town. And since there's no specific site or proposal that I've seen for what they plan on building in this particular area, the only thing I have to go on is what was advertised by the, advertised in the, by the agent for the property. And this is what was shown on their site as being built on the Lakewood Tennis Club site, which was an infill conceptual redevelopment plan. I'm going to show it to the audience too. And that would, something like this would totally change the whole character of Lakewood. And I have one other thing to say before my, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Hello, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight at all, but I live at Lakewood Villas.
You can pull the microphone down.
Oh, okay, is that better? Thank you. Thank you. I live at Lakewood Villas condos, I've been a homeowner there since the early 90s and a renter before that. I'm also a member of Lakewood Tennis Club. I'm not representing our board, our homeowners board in an official capacity. I thought someone else was coming, but I was the only one that could show up tonight. I am a very active participant in board meetings and so on. And a number of us in our development have really grave concerns about increased traffic, which would be caused by building new residential area there or possibly building business. And for anybody that doesn't know, the Lakewood Villas are bounded on the south by McCarran, on the east by Lakeside, and then on the west by the golf course. Traffic's bad enough in this area as it is already and we just are very concerned about the, the traffic in the area that could be caused by building residential areas or housing develops of some kind or condos or anything in that area. So just ask you to keep that in mind when you make your decision of what's going to happen to traffic. It could gravely affect our property values if traffic is increased greatly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judy.
Good evening. I am opposed to this and I'll tell you why. I live in the DeLoreto Homes or the Lewis Homes off of Ridge View and Lakeside. My parents moved there in 1980. Well, they bought the house new when the project, I think it was 91. And, and I've been there since 98. And I think it would be a travesty to allow this. This was proposed once before when they were, wanted to tear out all the two-story condos and put in five-story apartment buildings and offices and businesses. And that rendering that the gentleman showed looks an awful lot like what the other was, it's just across the street now and they're tearing out the part of the, the Lakewood estates or the Lakewood Apartments and, and that area. It was determined then that it would be a traffic problem. And now, 10 years later, you're telling me with the 10 times more people that there are around here, that it's not a traffic problem? I don't think so. If you try and go up and down McCarran at, at Lakeside or Plumas at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, you might as well give it up. I, you know, I, I drive around and hide this way and that. McCarran has become a thoroughfare, it's become an alternate 395, coming from up in the Robb Drive area down, down to 395. And to add all these businesses and apartments, I absolutely, plus the fact that these people are going to have children, the school, as I understand, is already at its max per classroom. And so what, where are they going to go to school? And all this garbage about people building, that they're going to build buildings and they're going to build schools, they're building the houses first, the people are going to be there, the kids got to go somewhere. So by the time they get the schools built, you already have got super, super problems. And, and I don't see that our education level has improved an awful lot in the 20-some years that I've lived, or 25 years I've lived here. And I, I'd like to see it improved instead of demolished by putting too many kids in school and too many houses. I think that the planning commission should be looking at putting less density in, in dwelling units per acre and not trying to crunch so many people together because right now Lakeside has cars up and down every day. There's not enough parking for the people that are in the Lakewood Apartments. And so I think you need to consider that and look back at the previous requests for the, for these five-story, because that's what they're going to do. And I don't think that that should be allowed either. I don't think you need to change the height. If anything else, I think you should lower it if that 55-foot is in there, the 35-foot is plenty good. I think they can find alternative methods to make more money out of there, maybe sell, maybe sell some memberships to the, to the unit. Oops, my time's up. Anyhow, I think it would be a travesty and I think if you do it, that you would not do any favors to our community.
Thank you, Linda. Do we have any additional requests to speak forums on this, Michelle?
Yes.
No.
I haven't signed a form, but I'd like to say something.
Just state your name when you get there and when you're done, fill out a form with Michelle at the end.
My name is Mike Genin.
Speak into the microphone, please. Thanks.
My name is Mike Genin. I am a owner of a home in Copper Point and I am a member of the tennis club. And I am unfamiliar with most of the rules and regulations in Reno, I've only been here 10 years. You folks are pretty impressive if you've mastered the, the rules and regulations. I am concerned about traffic also and the fact that I'm aware that there is more building going on right now. And I would hope that the traffic folks are going to be aware of the additional building that is going on right now, in addition to anything that happens at the tennis court, at the gym. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any additional requests to speak forums on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for questions, who'd like to get us started. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Andy, again. So we've heard a lot about traffic from public comment. In the next step, this graphic that you had, you addressed the traffic question and what would happen after the zoning. Can you talk a little bit about what you would have to do when you come with a specific site, site, building, site for the traffic concerns?
Michelle, can I get my presentation? I believe it was this, this exhibit? So yeah, so as I stated in, in the presentation, this is kind of one step in a multi-step process in, in the overall development process to, to redevelop something on this property. We're at the initial stage, which is the zoning, zoning map amendment. In, in this case, it's, it really is imperative that the zoning is changed or else nothing else really can happen there because of the narrow spectrum of uses that are allowed in the existing SPD. We need to change the zoning in order to be proactive and have the opportunity for additional uses to go in there to redevelop the site.
So that's what we're talking about tonight?
Correct.
Is the zoning map amendment?
Correct.
And then the next step?
Yeah, so then the next step would be actually when we come forward with a development plan. So when we say, yes, we're going to build apartments or condos, as we had shared, those are kind of some of the uses that we're looking at to redevelop. At that point, we would have then the, the quantifiable data to say, we have this many residential units and we can quantify the traffic impact as part of that and then analyze that impact on the existing system. So we don't have that right now because right now, really the only uses that are allowed there, as I shared, are kind of those, those two uses, either the existing apartments or the, or the tennis club. And so in order to analyze the traffic, we need to have zoning that is appropriate for other uses so that we can then take the next step in our planning process, which is to develop a, a, a development plan and, and architecture that would be appropriate for this site. In, in, and then in concert with that, looking at the traffic impacts and how they would need to be mitigated with that development.
Okay, and then I have one more question. What is the maximum building height on the site right now?
The maximum building height's 55 feet. So the existing fitness center is, like I said, it's, it depends on how you look at it, it's, it appears to be four stories, it's three full stories. And then there's kind of a penthouse, I think they do, you know, like yoga or, or Pilates or something up there. It's not a full story, it's kind of a, a smaller glassed-in portion. So I think per code, it would be considered as a floor, the building height would be, we measured up to that point. And so it's 55 feet, the existing building's 55 feet.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner, additional questions?
I drive south on Plumas, 8 o'clock most mornings, hang a left onto South McCarran. 50% of the time, lucky if there's enough space to turn left onto McCarran because of backing up from the traffic light on Plumas. No, I mean Lakewood, Lakewood. This is adding 10% more ADT to the exist, just rough calculations of 24,000 and adding 2,200, around 10%. And yet we're not seeing any, I mean, what the staff report says is we're not seeing, we won't see any decrease in functionality from C down to something worse with that additional traffic volume. Is that at any time or just a kind of a generic?
So in getting to Commissioner Taylor's comments, you know, she was definitely asking about kind of what the process is for analyzing the traffic at this stage in the development process, it's premature for us because we don't know what the development plan is. If it's senior housing versus, you know, traditional market rate housing, then there's, there's a big difference in the amount of traffic generation there. If there's a redevelopment of, of the tennis club and some of those uses are going away, you're going to have a net decrease, you know, so there's, there's a lot of things to analyze as part of that. Staff kind of did a...
Though that we, I think it is relevant for our considerations to consider the traffic impacts of the... of the proposed zone change. You know, quite honestly, I'm generally supportive of this. I was just trying to figure out, how is it that we're not seeing any adverse impact associated with 10%, just by this potential? We're talking potentially, we're not talking actual.
Sure. And at this stage, it's purely hypothetical, right? I mean, we are looking at changing colors on a map, going to, you know, to potentially redevelop it. We don't have those uses to fully analyze it and quantify what the actual trips are, and to do the analysis to see what the levels of service are. So code requires us, like I said in the presentation, it requires us at, you know, when we hit 100 peak hour trips, which generally speaking would be 100 homes, you know, just to give you some comparison, that we would have to then submit a traffic analysis. And that analysis then analyzes what the existing network currently carries, and then what the existing, and how the intersections operate. And there are code requirements for levels of service at those intersections of what they need to operate at. And then we would then put in our project on top of that and analyze what the base case plus our project would be. That's the process at the next step, unfortunately.
I got it. Thank you.
Commissioner, additional questions? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy, could you put up the map that shows the proposed zoning?
There's no keyboard here anymore. It's difficult to go quickly.
Actually, the one you just skipped over.
This? So this is our kind of very generic proposed redevelopment plan?
So, this question might sound familiar, and it is, why if you are proposing to retain the eastern half of that dark, sort of that lighter blue, non-hatched area as the tennis club, and really only develop the western half, then why do you need CC zoning on the whole thing?
So this, yeah, and just kind of the rationale of why this is the portion to be saved. It obviously has the bulk of the buildings, or the fitness center, the restaurant are in this building portion here. These are the nicer outdoor courts. This is the stadium court, so it's kind of the, you know, center court, if you would, and then the large outdoor pool. So there was sort of a synergy to have this be the retained portion. Then this is, you know, rectangular in shape and has, you know, good access with this existing driveway off of Plumas, kind of lended itself to the better redeveloped portion of the site for some other use. With respect to why we're changing the whole thing versus, I guess, you know, splitting the zoning down the middle, anytime we split zoning, it's kind of a messy endeavor, because it, you're going to have a separate set of standards on one side of your property than the other. A lot of time, you know, code allows it, but a lot of times, you'll see it in cases where it's, you know, kind of large swaths of land, and you would have, you know, a split zone, maybe to carve out a rock outcropping or some natural feature. This is kind of a different case than that. So what we're trying to do is kind of clean up the property and the zoning. The SPD is very old and antiquated. It is, like I said, from the 1980s originally, and when you look at it, it's not, you know, I've authored a few SPDs in my career, and we write them, you know, we wrote them as kind of design standards, kind of in a similar fashion to that you'd see in a PUD. This one is really just a compilation of staff reports and approval letters that went through the city council at that time. So it's this very messy, kind of convoluted set of standards and conditions. And to weed through that, in addition to try and redevelop it, creates a really difficult situation, in our estimation. And so this is an opportunity, again, for us to be proactive and look to kind of clean the slate from the zoning's perspective, and open this up for a more comprehensive planning effort and look at redeveloping the site.
But you would agree that if the whole thing is rezoned CC, including that eastern half there, that there's nothing really stopping development of that eastern half, in a similar way as you're talking about for the western half?
No, you're right. I mean, my client, the applicant, definitely has a notion to redevelop just a portion and leave, you know, kind of retain, you know, the good bones of the existing facility, and redevelop it and make it something, you know, new and fresh, and, you know, a great amenity to the community, again. But yes, when you rezone the old thing, it definitely opens the door that, you know, the whole thing could be redeveloped. You could get rid of the tennis club, and you could come in with some new uses in there. That's kind of, you know, just to, in my presentation, you know, that came up at the nab that, you know, CC allows for a whole host of uses in here. And, you know, the fear is always, oh, we're going to come in with a shopping center or some really intense use here. There is sort of a safety valve, if you will, in code with the requirement that anything that happens on this site, because of just the physical location of it next to existing residentially zoned properties, any non-residential use, any non-residential use, to stress that, would have to come before this body with a special use permit. So then you would have the opportunity at that time to judge the appropriateness of it and look at impacts to traffic and other things at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner? Additional questions? Comments?
Can I say one more thing?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're three minutes, I'm sorry, ma'am. Three minutes for public comment. Additional discussion items? Commissioner Marshall?
I think Commissioner Gower's last line of questioning is very apropos. We should assume that while maybe this developer's intent not to touch the good bones of the tennis club, that what the action we're taking will potentially result in redevelopment of the entire site, which, in my opinion, may not be, you know, depending what they propose, it may not be a bad thing. But I really do think there is, we have to, and with all the traffic impacts, et cetera, understand that this is really, we're just, that picture is not relevant for, at this point. Whether or not this should be rezoned CC. And what I don't have a great grasp on is, they've kind of focused on the uses that are existing, and perhaps I should, if this is an appropriate question, but really look at the full range of CC uses. And I think they're set forth, but they're in that long chart, right? Anne Marie, is there a more synopsized version of that? Just...
Anticipating this question, and out of curiosity for myself, I wanted to see the different uses broken up for the CC, and what required a special use permit. Now, note that the commercial uses, the commercial uses and the institutional uses do go off this page.
Anne Marie, you can bring the microphone with you.
But the intent of this exercise was to really see where discretionary review was required. So things that are highlighted in yellow are require discretionary view in CC zoning district. In addition to that, anything from the commercial over through to the industrial would be considered commercial, and therefore would require a special use permit coming before this body to be proposed. I'm not sure if this helps Commissioner Marshall?
Yes, it does. Thank you. What is the zoning on the office park kitty corner, or across, it's not kitty corner, it's across Plumas? It's a strip. It's an odd strip.
Across Plumas?
It's the, I can't remember the name of the office.
General Office.
General Office.
So Anne Marie, just want to reiterate what you said, and I think what Andy said. Anything under, that's not in the residential line item, anything there, even though it doesn't say, there's, you've highlighted the SUPs in yellow, but because of this site being adjacent to residential, anything in those, regardless of whether it says it or not, even if it's a church or a fitness center that's already in place, would require a special use permit process back before this body. Is that correct?
You do raise a good question. I'm going to ask Sienna to answer this, because I don't know about nonprofits. If a church was a nonprofit, if they would be considered commercial, that I...
That just happened to be one of the...
But yes, any commercial use would be an SUP.
For the record, Sienna Reed, so in terms of our SUP for non-residential uses, a church is certainly a non-residential use. We have seen them come forward various times to establish through the special use permit process. So you can count on everything in that commercial, recreation, lodging, institutional, and industrial category, if it isn't already on site today, needing to come in and establish through that residential adjacent C special use permit process.
Thank you, Sienna.
I guess my...
Sorry to jump in the middle.
No, no, please, that was good. Because in my mind, it doesn't make a difference whether or not we, we're looking at whether use is appropriate, whether or not it's SUP or some other level of review. I think the critical question is, is this list of uses appropriate for this particular piece of property? And it is, sits on a corner. We have traffic issues with McCarran, but I think that's, you know, almost like a diff, I don't want to say different issue, but, you know, when I look at this, it seems, it seems kind of like a, not a bad place for community commercial. I'm not certain how it all works with the ins and outs and the access and egress, given the various traffic, but that's, you know, site planning, that's not necessarily zoning, per se. I wonder if it's a, you know, is it a good place for community commercial to have some more locally-serving retail, reduce trips? You know, there's a lot of housing around. I don't know if that's, I'd love to get your all's impression of that list of uses and whether that list is appropriate for this particular site. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Marshall. Additional comments? Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, I'll follow up on that. And the reason I ask those questions is, you know, sometimes it's easier with a zone change to look at, to know what the project is ahead of us. In this case, I thought it was not, just the way it was presented and kind of split up. And looking at it as the whole nine and change acre parcel, and what those uses could be, and then taking a step back and looking at it from, is it compatible with, were, with the master plan and with the surrounding zoning and the surrounding uses? And, you know, similar to where Commissioner Marshall was going, with looking at those uses, and then overlaying the discretionary review process, making sure that there's the compatibility of any future project, not only with traffic, but adjacent residential with adjacent, you know, any other uses, to making sure that the process allows for and builds in those compatibility and those design components of any future project. So for me, kind of those cross-cutting topics allowed me to be able to make the findings, looking at this as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Additional comments?
I guess I'll chime in. I'll echo that in terms of, you know, we see this a lot with zone changes of existing items, and having to look through the list of all of the possible items, and what may be appropriate and what isn't appropriate, and what would we like to see there, and what wouldn't we like to see there. And the owners of the property are doing the same thing. I mean, I think they recognize that they're not going to come through here with a, you know, and find a lot of, you know, just to throw something out there, you know, a building and landscape material and lumberyard is not going to be something that somebody's going to want to put on this site. So just because it's allowed, I think we're also looking at that as well. And I think from the findings that we have to make here, there's a number of these findings that I think actually changing this to community commercial is a better fit for this particular site than what might be there right now. So I appreciate all of the questioning and the comments about traffic. That's certainly one of the prime items that's going to come up on any future project here. It's going to be questions at that and access with that, whether it's one development or a split development in different ways in. And I think that, understanding that is, certainly just makes this that much easier to, you know, review from a finding standpoint. So additional comments or a motion at this point?
Commissioner Marshall?
In the matter of LDC 19-00074, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve zoning map amendment and Club Lakewood Specific Plan District Amendment by ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Commissioner Taylor, a second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. For those of you in the audience, this is going, we are making a recommendation to city council. As a zone change, the ultimate authority on this is the city council. Do we have any idea on date where this will be heard there, Arlo? Not to put you on the spot, but I am.
This should be landing on our second meeting in September, which has been rescheduled to Monday, the 23rd, I believe it is.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is case, item 7.5, case number LDC 19-00068, the Ginsburg Clock Park Lane Clock Zoning Map Amendment. And I believe the applicant on this is the city.
The applicant, I will be doing the applicant and the staff report tonight. I'll just wait for the slide to come up. I, nope, one report, or one presentation. We've got to start how this works. This was originally nominated by the HRC. They unanimously voted for a certain criteria to recommend to city council that they designate this as a historic landmark and a historic resource within our community. It went in front of city council. City council agreed and approved. The process then goes that we put an historic overlay on the property or on the item. So it goes back to Planning Commission, then we'll go back up to city council for first reading and then second reading on that. So it takes five hearings to actually get this through. We are currently working on our Title 18 update. In that update, we will streamline that to HRC, to, for designation and zoning to city council, one hearing, second hearing, reading, and zoning will be applied at that point. So we're really excited about that process, and me as the HRC liaison, I am going to appreciate that dearly, so. Once again, this is for the Ginsburg Clock. I haven't done this since, okay. So Harry Ginsburg came to our community in around the early part of the century, in 1935. He purchased the clock that he put outside of his Ginsburg jewelry. That was located approximately 130 North Virginia Street, so just outside of where we are now. Its current location is 30 Ginsburg, North Ginsburg Street. Prominent jeweler in their community for 40 years, is a very prominent businessman. Finally closed his shop in about 1971. So the Ginsburg Clock, I hope you're all familiar with it. It stands just outside City Hall here. Beautiful example, the E. Hammond Company was the manufacturer of this clock. They manufactured all kinds of timepieces, over 100,000 different timepieces over that beginning of the early century, a very prominent clock. There is rumor that this clock was actually on a street back east originally, and then not bought new, and he bought it out. That's still, there's some confirmation on that of where that was. And so this is noting that current location where we are, but we do have a history sort of in-between that, that I'm sure most of you are aware of. So this clock did go originally, was downtown in 1967, about four years before Ginsburg closed his business. He donated, or that clock went to the Park Lane Mall. From 1967 to 2007, it was at the Park Lane Mall, was inside. It was then, there was a lot of negotiation with Bob Keschel, a former mayor, and he got that clock donated. It sat in a box from 2007 to 2012. In 2012, they reinstalled that with the help of Bill Thornton, who is the owner of Calleva. He donated a generous fund to get that going for their 50th anniversary of Calleva. And then Tom Healy from Laughing Planet has also been involved in that. He is sort of the resident caretaker at this point. He keeps it kind of on time and gets the pieces back and is doing all that. They recently, the HRC does yearly awards, and they were all awarded a memorative plaque for getting the landmark... for getting the landmark, this historic clock, back into kind of a city public position again. So it is uniquely, it is a fine example of kind of a uterian structure, that structure of, that the public has access to. They're, they're often very rare. We see them less and less in our community, and so this is just such an important example of that. As I mentioned, Harry Ginsburg, a very prominent businessman and an important part of our community and our history. They also saw that, these are the characteristics, the design that the HRC determines their eligibility for. They were able to, out of the nine, they were able to make five of them. They only need to make one. So it is just really an amazing piece of our history. They represented the work of the master builder architect, landscape architect. If you look at the craftsmanship on that clock and the detail and, and the timing, and that it is still running after all these years. They have changed out some of the timepieces, they do send it back to get repaired, but it is just a fine example of that. The craftsmanship, as I, as I mentioned, and then once again, that uterian structure. So, we bring it before you today to recommend to city council that we over, do an overlay zoning on the property. I did provide a staff report. Staff could make all the findings, the applicable findings in this case. There's many as far as windows and some of that do not apply. But staff does recommend approval of, of this zoning. Available for any questions if necessary.
All right. Thank you, Brooke.
Mm-hmm.
We need to do disclosures for this. I guess it's a public item. Disclosures? Starting with Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, I walked by the clock about five hours ago.
That's a good disclosure. I think we can all state that. Michelle, do we have any request to speak for us on this item?
Not on this item.
Questions for Brooke?
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna ask one, so.
Forgive me for, for not understanding this. What is this? What does this do?
So, this is, this is sort of what we're working on this process through our Title 18 update, because it is kind of convoluted of what this does. So what this does allow, an overlay zoning district allows the modifications of uses, but it has become the mechanism that we use to designate our historic resources. So it actually applies an overlay zoning, just zoning, but an overlay on the item or property or, or what that be. What that does allow in our code is that we do have incentives for alternative uses that are not allowed in those zoning, and that's one of the incentives to, to put your property on the historic register.
Brooke, I'm gonna follow that up. This is a zone change.
Correct.
But it's not a zone change for the parcel.
No.
It's a zone change for an object.
Correct.
How? I, believe me, I'm asking this question out of just try, here, here's my issue with this. I understand what we're trying to do, and I'm, I'm fully in support of it. But what we're doing is we're creating a separate zoning on a piece of a parcel that's not even fully defined. I mean, I'm looking at this and it's, it's a, it's a box. So-
It will be a spot overlay.
It's a spot, so a spot overlay. Do we have a spot overlay in code? And, and I'm, I recognize that this can be cleaned up by Title 18, but I honestly, out of all seriousness, have a concern about putting an overlay on a portion of a property, from the sense of, you know, this is very defined. It's a, you know, it's on the historic, the city's historic register. But the clock's on the city register. The site is not.
Correct.
Okay. So what happens if, hypothetically speaking, there's development on this site that requires a third relocation of the clock?
At that time, we would, another zone amendment would come through to remove that overlay, and then we would move forward to apply that overlay at that next location. I'm hoping with the, the HRC, or the historic resource update, that we really, these landmarks where the overlay is really to provide that use, right? That alternative use or that incentive for use. The landmark will never have a use but a clock, right? It's not-
So this is, so the, the reason we're doing this, the reason we're doing this is because it's the only mechanism in place. Now, is there, just to back it up another step, it's on the city's register of historic places as an object.
Been designated as a historic resource. It is the overlay that ultimately puts it on the register.
Okay. Does that come with any sort of signage out there to let us know that it's on the register? These, I, I know it's late, and I didn't, I would have liked to have this at the beginning of the thing, because I'm, now it's just sounding like I'm dragging these out. But these are, these are honest questions that I'm trying to understand.
And they, and this is, these are the questions we've been having internally of staff of how challenging going through this process can be, and what we're, what we're trying to achieve and how hard it is.
Okay. So the only, the only way that this closes the loop on putting it on to the city's register is to give it a historic overlay.
Correct.
Which is a zoning item that's not for the entire parcel. And we're okay with that from a legal standpoint?
Well, I thought we were gonna at least have a legal description, so we're actually rezoning a piece of land that happens to have a clock on it.
Yeah, and we could create a legal description that would outline that clock that we would take, then take to council to give.
Even if it says a four-foot square piece inside the stanchions would be, be something.
Yes.
So if, if, you know, because without any kind of legal description, it's, it's a spot zoning that, it, yeah.
It's a, it's a GIS overlay.
But it's not called out on, there's no parcel. It's 30 North Virginia Street.
Well, no, but it's a, it's a GIS map that has this, that has a rectangle or a square on it. It's the overlay that identifies where it is and describes it.
We're not, that's not part of what's being brought before us tonight. There's no overlay here. I see that, but that's-
We don't have a legal description with that overlay.
Is that, is there a legal description with it?
There is not a legal, we have not had that survey to, to put that point on there.
Arlo, you can try.
We, we can generate a legal description from the GIS layer for the ordinance that needs to go through city council. Bottom line is, this is one of many very cumbersome processes that are built into our codes. It's currently required for the historic landmark designation. So this is the process we have now, and we don't really have other mechanisms to allow this to be listed on a register. And that's why we're doing this long process for a clock. And in the future, we hope to streamline it.
How far away in the future?
With the code update.
So a year?
Yes. We, we maybe see, maybe one or two of these a year, if that. So we would expect probably to see perhaps another building or something come on within the next six months to a year. The Title 18, so the historic resource portion has been done. We were awarded a grant from that. That grant, we worked with SHPO on that. We have done the initial draft. They have reviewed that draft. We've made those comments. We'll be seeing the historic resource portion coming into the standards portion and started to be incorporated in the Title 18 update.
I'm, I'm gonna see if there's any other questions on the commission or see where they are. I, I will, I would hate for this to go any further without a very specific description as to what's going on there. If we're going to do this as a zone change, which is tied to a parcel, that parcel needs to be clearly defined. And if there's another process involved that we can go to, and if that process is coming up anytime soon, I would suggest perhaps not moving forward with this, because I do not like the idea of, of spot zoning something, any kind of overlay that's not the entire parcel, just because I see that creating an opportunity in the future to be stretched to places that we don't want it to go. So if this is, if this is truly the only course that's open to us, and if it's truly something that needs to happen before there's another mechanism in place, then I understand where we're going. But with a caveat that this needs to be better defined in terms of its, its site.
It's interesting, and it's maybe because I've had experience with, you know, converting from legal descriptions to GIS overlays. But I think I wanna tease out two different issues, and I'm not certain if they intersect. But one issue that you're saying is, we shouldn't designate something smaller than a parcel. But, and that's not-
I'm saying we're adding a zoning overlay, which is based on land use and parcel use, but we're doing it for only a portion of a parcel.
And that's, that you find that objectionable? Or that, that's what's raising the concern?
Well, especially in this situation, because it's not a defined parcel. It's a clock that can move around on that site because it's an object.
I guess, I guess I would counter that by saying that the GIS overlay is very specific. I mean, you, you don't have a quote, legal description meets and bounds, or, you know, an APN associated with, with it. But you have a very exact GIS, you know, I don't know what you'd call it, algorithmic description of that site.
And, and I'm, I understand that, Commissioner Marshall, and I would agree with that as a description. If that's the, if that's the best way we can do it, because it's not a separate parcel, as long as it's clearly defined, that it's this portion of this site. That's the first item, is that we don't have that. The second item is that, are we gonna, what else would, might this be used for? And that I don't have an answer to. But that, because, same thing, I need examples of, of items. But that's, you know, we're, we're allowing for a different kind of overlay, or a different, essentially a zoning on a portion of a parcel.
Just to address kind of our zoning system, we actually use GIS for the official zoning maps. So this is what we use as a legal description. When we get our typical, you know, vents 100 feet this way, we have to convert that to GIS, and that's how we manage our zoning layers. Generally, they follow parcel lines, but there are many, many examples around the community where parcels are split. Sadly, this is the process we have now. If it's approved, the clock can't move because it's in a historic landmark. Well, it would have to go, it would have to go before the Historic Resource Commission. They would make the valuation through a certificate of appropriateness or a certificate of demolition in case of that movement of where that would be relocated. So that overlay gives the opportunity to apply those other two mechanisms of a public hearing to that. They did state within their original public hearing that they don't see the location as the clock, because it has moved to a different location. It is really the clock that is historic. We just put the overlay on it where, where it arrives. So if, if that clock were to move, we would anticipate that we would, would go to HRC, they would look for a demolition, it would be moved, just like we would move a historic structure. They would reestablish, you know, that in the next place of that designation and go forward. So. And hopefully with a new process.
Commissioner Marshall?
I'm ready to make a motion, if you'll accept it.
I'm, I'm-
Sure. I don't wanna cut this short.
Please do.
In the matter of LDC 19-00068, based upon the compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion.
Commissioner Gower, a second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion? Everybody's looking at me. No. I think, obviously-
One, one item.
Commissioner Hawkins?
One item here. If, if this is a spot deal, and we're talking about the overlay, if it gets moved, does that put that in a non-conforming way? Since it moves from the GIS site?
No, it would, you would have to, as Brooke explained, you'd have to move the GIS site to wherever you move the clock. So you'd have to do another zoning map amendment.
Okay, so we wouldn't fall into a non-conformist deal? Okay.
I will just summarize my comments by saying, I think we've identified a very glaring issue with our current situation with respect to the city register of historic places and objects. And I'm looking forward to seeing that cleaned up during the Title 18. A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you all for the discussion.
Okay, moving on. Item number eight, Trucky Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Gower, I'm gonna turn this one over to you.
Okay. Commissioner Gower, so the update, the commission, Regional Planning Commission received the third draft version of the updated regional plan for review. That's including the policies, all of the context that goes with the plan. So the next steps are that there will be three planning commission meetings, one in each jurisdiction. That's the requirement. I think state statute requires that, actually. And then Governing Board will have a chance to look at it, but we're looking at the end of September for final adoption of the updated regional plan. And it's available online, if you wanna look at it.
All right. Thank you. Staff announcements, item number nine. Arlo?
I have several. First off, I want to apologize for the noticing snafu we had for the last meeting. So we missed one meeting, and there have been quite a few council meetings in the intervening month. So I'd like to go through a few announcements. Angela Foose is on board, stayed through the whole clock discussion as our new planning manager. She'll be sitting up here, starting at your next meeting. Because she did do development consulting in the past, we're gonna take an abundance of caution, and she'll be out of here for any of her prior clients for a significant period of time, and I will be sitting up here. So there may be a little tag teaming on occasion. Moving on, there were two items you asked me to follow up on previously. The school review letters I touched on earlier. I did have a good chat with, with Adam at the school district. He committed to working to add a little additional information, kind of the bottom line on school capacities and ability to absorbs in their comment letters. He wanted to reassure all of us that with their new funding mechanisms for schools, they're feeling very good about their ability to keep up with school construction, with the demands of growth, and they don't see any significant problems. I think some of our developments in West Reno may be the ones where some additional discussion of school sites are gonna be needed when those come through the process. I don't think we've seen any of these new comment letters and just what they are, but he asked me to convey that, and we should be seeing a little additional information in the future. Also, on the roads maintenance prioritization system, our public works department should have a, I think they're gonna do a memo rather than a presentation regarding their system. I believe it should be ready for your next meeting. Moving on, some of our planning division projects, I've mentioned a few times now that we're trying to focus more on the high priority, long-range issues, in particular, facility plans and funding mechanisms. We're taking a much more active role with the Regional Transportation Commission, heading into their new update. We've had a lot of discussions about not just the transportation plan, but also the RIF system and the general framework to try to support infill development to the greatest extent possible. And there's pros and cons of all sorts of different options, but we are advocating for some type of change for the reasons articulated earlier. The regional plan update, as mentioned, is in the final stages. I did receive a request today. They're hoping to do a presentation at your next Reno Planning Commission meeting on the basic overview of, of the plan there. So that should be on the front end of your next meeting. And additionally, we're spending a lot of work on water and wastewater management plans, as well as fire and police facility plans, and basically trying to get our infrastructure planning and funding mechanism in better shape to accommodate the growth that's called for in the master plan. There have been quite a few city council meetings and actions, in particular-
There have been quite a few city council meetings and actions, in particular on the North Valley's water situation. I wanna spend a couple minutes on the various actions taken. They were pretty consequential. The city council had a special meeting workshop on August fifth, followed up the next day with a joint meeting with Washoe County and the Airport Authority. At that meeting, they took action to proceed with quite a few items concurrently. Those are to proceed with expansion of the Reno-Stead water reclamation facility as quickly as possible, with conditions that involve, number one, no additional discharge of effluent to Swan Lake, proceeding as quickly as possible with land application to start mitigating flooding and lowering water levels there, proceeding with feasibility study for reservoir storage to allow for more effluent reuse and less discharge into Swan Lake, direction to use the half million gallon per day flow shave project primarily for flood relief and lowering water levels rather than to support new development. The details of that are still to be defined, but it's really a in-whole and accelerated program to lower water levels and alleviate the situation out there. In conjunction with that, they provided direction to move to a retention requirement ratio of one to one point three. We've been conditioning one to one point two-five lately. And to move forward with long-term facility plans and funding mechanisms, essentially to come up with facility plans through build-out for that area involving a subcommittee of the city council to be established here in the near future. We've been asked to return with what in effect will be an allocation system for sewer capacity at the next, or for the September eleventh city council meeting. Our hope is to be able to proceed with the lowering of water levels, but not, not essentially grind development to a halt, but accommodate early phases of projects. But there could be a situation where wastewater treatment capacity runs out if development wants to keep going. So it is a very important consideration, both environmentally for the flooding impacts, but also for the economy in general. But overall, we were pretty pleased to get clear direction. They did follow up and went ahead and approved the sewer treatment plant on appeal. They authorized three million dollars for the land application project and somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars for the reservoir feasibility analysis. I think that's basically the package on wastewater. Many, many hours, couple hundred people at some of those meetings, a lot of good discussion. Some of you may have watched it. In addition to the, the wastewater and water and flooding issues, the city council did approve the two text amendments, the cleanup item for gas station signs. They changed that to a one-hour flip time rather than the twenty-four hour flip time following your direction to have some continued discussions. They also approved the suite of amendments suggested by the mayor's housing task force to modestly incentivize infill development. Development projects, the California Zone Change was approved, the Nailed It Special Use Permit was approved on appeal, the Ryland Apartments were approved on appeal, the Vassar Street Zone Change from a couple districts to IC was appealed, and the Bella Vista Ranch PUD Amendment, you may recall, they were swapping residential and non-residential. That got continued for roughly three months to deal with wild horse issues and advocates wanting some facilities for wild horses. So that one did not get approved. I think that's everything. Sorry for the long update.
Thank you, Arlo. Next, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Commissioner Hawkins.
What was it, four or five weeks ago when we last met? I brought up the point that I wanted something said about the asphalt, specifically out there on Sky Vista where the two developments are going right now. Nothing's been done. I've talked to a guy named Hans who's controlling the asphalt repair through Public Works. I've had nothing done out there than, than what they're doing is putting an acceleration lane from Trading Post onto Sky Vista. We need somebody to talk to us on, on road repairs around the, in and around the areas that we've approved developments, because they're beating up the roads real bad.
All right. I'll wrote that down. Okay. Additional suggestions?
One other comment. I've been an act, active in talking about annexation and abandonment and letting us get our feet wet. And according to the little chart we saw tonight by Arlo, the city says no. Well, the problem I have is if they're gonna keep giving us projects like the one that was down south off Andrews Lane, where they wanted us to approve an amendment for a master plan before they were annexed into the city of Reno, just to see if they could get it, you know, that, that, it doesn't cut it with me. I mean, one hand's tied to the other saying, you know, we're not gonna give you this zone change or master plan amendment until you have a annexation of the property and we all went through it. So city council's saying, we can't delve down into the abandonment and annexation part of it, but we sure can listen to the other stuff where we're gonna give them a master plan amendment. And, in hopes that they get it so they can come on board and, and be annexed into the city of Reno. That doesn't cut it with me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional suggestions? Okay. Next is public comment. This item is for either public comment or any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak for us on this item?
Not on this item.
Would you care to make public comment under this item? Okay. All right. I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for looking for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.